All right, welcome everybody to our October 21st, 2025 regular city council meeting. We are obviously live here in person at City Hall and we are broadcasting on Zoom as well. So when it comes to public comment later, if you want to share a comment, please make sure you get the meeting host via chat. We're going to go ahead and start with the invocation given by Councilmember Dunn and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together as a community. Inspire in us wisdom and imagination to listen and to speak for the place that we call home. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance could imply the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Ball, here, Mayor Pro Tim Cargill, Councilmember Spencer,
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy. All right, all present and accounted for. Are there any requested changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move general business consent agenda items 10C and E to general business action items.
At the end of the action item?
That's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion to move general business C and E to the end of general business action items. Do we have a second?
Second.
A little second by Councilmember Spencer. Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? My motion passes six zero. If any other requested changes. Right, not hearing any?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Right, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Yay, up to citizen comments. So as usual, we have two citizen comment periods for general business. If you would like to make a comment, we have, are they yellow or white today? Our white half sheets by the door over there. Just go ahead and fill one out and hand it into Rochelle at the end of the table. She'll get it to me. Limited three minutes. If there's anybody online, please send a note to our meeting host in chat. I'm not seeing anybody rushing and I don't have any slips. So it looks like we don't, probably don't have any public comments here in chambers. Is there anyone online? So I'll forego the rules and if we don't have anybody, I'll go through those later. Nobody? No, okay, so no public comments. We do have another opportunity at the end and with each of the resolutions and ordinances that come before us. So we will go ahead and move up to announcements, proclamations and special presentations. And up first, we have Rose Noble from Visit Spokane with some exciting things to share.
Welcome. Good evening. Hi, thanks for letting me be here. I know I'm annoying because I've asked to give you presentations every quarter, but I'm really excited about today's presentation. So I believe they're going to click through for me, but real quick, this is me following up with kind of where I'm at after we've, you approved giving us some lodging tax dollars that we applied for. So I'm going to go through the presentation. There's kind of like a pre-slide that I'm going to kind of quickly go through before I show you kind of the product. It'll just get you updated. Also want to let you know that we will have a full annual report for you. But before November 30th, that is regards to the TPA, which you are looped into with us. And we do all of our regional destination marketing with. So that's separate from today. Today is specifically just on the lodging tax dollars that you approved a few months ago. Okay, next slide. Well, if you didn't notice, that was a new photo, a new beautiful drone photo of your lake. Okay? So we had presented this presentation on some reasons why we would be interested in getting some dollars from y'all. So we'll go to the next slide here. And one of the things we talked about was the need for specific photo and video assets to Liberty Lake. And in addition to acquiring those to put into all of our regional stuff, we'd be able to do very specific targeted Liberty Lake promotions only that actually don't loop in Spokane or, or the region. And we talk specifically about your businesses and things to do here. In addition, those assets are collected and we're going to be handing them over to small businesses. So we are essentially coming in with a professional photography and videography team and handing over product to businesses that sometimes can't afford it with their own marketing dollars. So go to the next slide. And I'm going to step back for a second because I think this video, hopefully there's a video.
Do you need me to dim the lights at all or do you think it's okay?
Well, it was. Hold on, technical difficulties. It worked early, but of course it doesn't work now.
Rose, destinations filled.
You're not supposed to point things out like that. Okay, so we're going to watch this video just real quick before we click yes to watch it. Just let you know that this is a some, this is all the content that we've captured so far, put into one thing that this is a long format. This is, you know, might be a little awkward for us. It's like a minute and a half. When we are putting promotions out, we're not really putting a minute and a half promotion videos out there. We're putting seven seconds, 15 seconds, 32 seconds. The minute and a half video will live on our YouTube long format channels as well as our website. And then y'all can have this on your site, but most consumers aren't sitting and just watching this. So it might seem a little long, but there's a lot of great new footage. So I'll step back and let that play. Okay, so we'll click through again. This is only 30 second though. Sorry. One more, one more back. It'll play automatically for 30 seconds. And that'll be. Okay, we're going to stay on this page because the point of me showing you that was that in the large video, every single one of those vignettes actually has its own separate video and its own separate photo shoot. So we're able to take that and slice it into multiple formats across all of our channels. So the three that are playing continuously right now don't have sound. You can see that we have a hiking focused one or outdoors one. We have a food, food focused one with the new properties that you have over there by the river. And then we do have a Salties Flat one, which I know is technically a county property and technically in the valley, but it's right there on the border and we're using that as an opportunity to get people out here. And if they're coming all the way out, then they're going to come and spend some money and time in Liberty Lake. So plus it's such a cool property. My son has recently got into birding, so I think it's pretty awesome. All right, we'll click to the next slide here. The other thing, this is just a, just a small, very small amount of some of the photos that we were able to capture. So when we're taking photography, we're not just taking pictures of a sign like the new love one. We're actually taking pictures of models and people inside the facilities, inside the attractions, doing things to actually make it an experience based photography again, which is also usually a pricier price point for businesses to hire out in terms of having additional creative talent to pay for. Go to the next slide. So this is in the works. I just wanted to keep it in here to let you know, we still are working on this. We talked about digital experience. I don't have this ready yet, but we will have this to you by the end of the year. You can go to the next slide. There's a couple of examples of digital experiences that we've already built out for Spokane, including a beer trail, coffee trail, holiday deals trail. So we are coordinating what that's going to look like for Liberty Lake. We had talked about doing experience around your farmer's market. So probably end up doing a preliminary build out in 2025. And then we'll, we'll add the assets that we got, we're able to capture this year through some photography. And then we'll just continue to add to that in 2026. Next page. So we had talked about being able to use some dollars to highlight some of your makers in the area. And we've launched a new campaign, which we'll go to in just a second on the next slide. But the new campaign is the inspo campaign where we are utilizing creative makers and innovators inside of our region to help tell a story. Mayor Chris is familiar with this. She just sat through a board meeting. We are utilizing them to help tell a story. We're really excited to announce that Liberty Lake Wine Cellars will be your first maker. I think we've already done some filming of them, but I am going to click to the next slide and we'll show you an example. I think a 30 second video is going to play.
My name is John Bryan and I run a brewery in Spokane, Washington.
We are a no library house. We're a craft brewery and it's our family business.
She'll see the flavor of Noli. We're kind of a blue collar peninsula brand.
We can do IPAs, lagers, any style you need it. We have 13 year round six pack beers.
We started traveling the beers around the world. Noli has the most international brewing awards of any brewery in North America. And I think there's some beautiful breweries in this town that do an amazing job. And I love to think that we're a part of helping that culture develop.
So we don't need to click the other video. The other one is just a quick seven second bumper. It shows three of our makers. We, I know that what I just showed you wasn't a Liberty Lake, Liberty Lake, but just to give you an idea of the program. So we'll highlight people making and doing things in Liberty Lake. And the first one is going to be Liberty Lake Wine Cellar. So it'll be a whole storytelling campaign around them. And essentially we hand that over to the artists as well for them to use on all their platforms too. So it's a great tool for them to help market their product and their place and everything that they have. All right, we can go to the next page. Okay, so we're going to click through this really quick. And we're going to show some ads examples. So currently right now, we have an escaped Liberty Lake ad campaign running using some of the new assets that we had. We will transition those to, those have been transitioned to fall. I don't have those, those screenshots with me. And then we will turn into winter, but we are pushing an escape to Liberty Lake. We're able to push this to all of our drive regions and try to get people from outside the market into Liberty Lake. Again, this is not a shared campaign with, with Spokane, but you can tell that we use similar branding and lettering, but we're using Liberty Lake assets on that. And what you're seeing is where it says ad sets, these are ads in motion. So I'm showing you as stills, but they actually rotate through. Okay, we'll go to the next. Okay, so what have we gotten so far with this? And I'm going to try to read this. So, so far with us just launching the escape to Liberty Lakes, we basically essentially spent the summer collecting assets and we launched in the fall. So since we've launched, this is, these are the numbers that we have. More than 225 people, 25,000 people in our drive markets have seen your ads, which is awesome. The Liberty Lake page on our website is the 10th most traffics site on our website. We're delivering all that ad tech activity back to our website. I didn't, we have a new website launching. So in January, when I'm back, we'll show you the new website. I'm not going to show you our old stuff right now. We have more than 25, 20% of the traffic is organic search as well from some of the videos that are playing on our social media. Ad placements on local news as well as in our regional drive market, but you're going to, locals are going to start to see it as well. We feel like that's important. There's a lot of people that live in Spokane surrounding, let's get them out here if they're not already coming out here to have them spend money in all of your businesses as well. And then we've been running organic social, like I noted, since September 30th. And the Salties Flat video has been very popular so far and that's the most popular one. Unfortunately, it's not, I know that's not exactly Liberty Lake, but like I explained, the proximity to it in our message of coming out here and experiencing everything there is to have.
Well, our businesses are closer to that than those stores.
Yes. And then we'll go just to the last slide because it's a really nice photo or we have two more before that, I guess. As a reminder, and this is one of the reasons why we love working with Liberty Lake too, we're the regional bureau. We promote destination for the region. We're still working to try to get the valley back with us. But our job is to enhance the overall visitor experience through visitor spending. So we want people from outside the region to come and spend money. In Liberty Lake's case, we also want that, but then we're also saying, hey, some of the locals that aren't coming out to Liberty Lake should be coming out here. There's a lot of great things happening. The next page kind of talks through all of the segments of tourism that we kind of will promote. Yes, we are heavy, heavy in convention business. It's big business. It's big money. But we're also talking about arts and culture. We're also helping a lot of small businesses with their promotion. We're doing some fundings with STA in the coming year in terms of transportation, education and how people can get around. And then of course we have special interests. So everything from heritage tourism to LGBTQ to ecotourism and even sports marketing, when it comes to sports that are not inside the public facilities district that we didn't bid on, but things like Bloom's Day or Hoop Fest and such, we're also promoting those. So the last page, I think is the last of my deck. And I just wanted, thought this was a great photo. So I wanted to end with this photo because this is the, the Lake Loop Trail, which I haven't personally done yet.
Me and Aldo with you.
Yeah, yeah. So again, today, intention of stage is just to show you that we have been busy. We've been putting those dollars to work. We've been generating, curating some really good assets, throwing some ads out there. We're really excited about the results so far with it being such a, only being active for a little bit over a month now. And we're going to continue to grow that. But any questions for me?
Great work. That's a lot, but good. Councilmember Dunn.
Rose, the assets are stunning. They're beautiful. Did I understand right that if I was a local business and I wanted to try and make, maybe make use of those for posting? I could get them from Spokane?
Yeah, so we, we've already, remember when I was here and I showed you some of the restaurant footage? We've already handed over restaurant images to all of the restaurants. And so I, I need, I'm not sure if we delivered these assets yet. I think we have. But yes, that's the intention was to capture these and share them out. There's going to be a few things that if we, if we're doing like a cover shoot, we might hold that photo and use it first as a visit Spokane before we hand it over. But the intention is to provide these assets for free to small businesses. Believe it or not, when I got to visit Spokane, they weren't really doing some of those programs and that we weren't really working with photographers that were giving us infinite license agreements. But now our contracts with photographers are saying we have full rights to these. We can't share them. It's understood. So there should be no liability worries as well.
I appreciate that service provided by Visit Spokane. Thanks.
And just a reminder, we work with tourism facing businesses. So if it's like a chiropractor or gas station, we're probably not going to come out and photograph. But if it was like a gas station with a really rocking food, you know, thing inside and it could, we could say it was a visitation, maybe. But there is limitations on what we can do, but we're excited to work with you. And Linda, thank you because she reached out and threw a couple of names our way with businesses that she really loves. She thought maybe she should get added to the roster, so.
Councilmember Ball, go ahead.
So if we wanted to see any of the, you know, the longer videos on individual businesses, we just.
Yeah, I can send a follow-up and get those to you. They're all living on our YouTube page, our Visit Spokane YouTube page. You can watch all of those and we're rolling out the small snippets on our social organically. So, okay, yeah, but I'm happy to send a link with some direct click throughs for you to watch.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. You did a good job, except for the misspelling.
Well, you know.
What she showed us tonight, is that, is that what the public can see right now?
Yes, the public can see that now.
If I, now as I miss it, I think when you, when you first saw off those Liberty Lake destination.
Oh, you mean this slide? No one else is saying that except you. And she said there's a misspelling.
I'm going to hit spell check on it.
You guys are tough. I'm glad this is open meeting act and anybody can watch and see humiliating, humiliated with the misspelling. No, so we'll, we'll make that correction.
At least Liberty Lake is spelled correct.
Yes. Hey, don't put it past me though. No. Okay, thank you so much.
Does anybody else have any other questions? No, again, great job, Rose. I knew, I knew it was coming. So you'd sent me previews and we had the board meeting last week and you've just done an amazing job since taken, taken the reins.
We love working with y'all and Mark's been super helpful too. So really excited to see the growth out here and glad that you're letting us be a part of it. So thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, oh, me, Mayor's Budget Message. My turn. All right. I was having trouble printing, so I'm going to bring it. And the age ups and downs are working and everything. Okay, tell me when you're ready, David. Oh, okay, I guess now. All right, everybody. So this is the time of year when I do the Mayor's Budget Message. The council will be getting copies of their binders before the end of the week and then we'll start into our special meetings. So here we go. Dear city council members and Liberty Lake residents, it is my honor to present the proposed budget for 2026. The past year has been one of strong progress and meaningful investment in our city. Thanks to your support and the incredible dedication of our staff, we accomplished several long awaited projects and laid the groundwork for continued improvements in the years ahead. Key accomplishments in 2025. Here are just a few highlights from what we achieved together this year. Trailhead Golf Course, a new restaurant officially opened after much anticipation. Pedestrian Safety, additional flashing crosswalk signals were installed throughout the city. Citywide Planning, we developed new facilities, pavement and sidewalk master plans. Road Improvements, we completed the Appleway Turn Lanes onto Country Vista and enhanced pavement, pavement patching projects. For example, Boone at Multer in front of Liberty Lake Elementary School. With regards to technology and safety, we installed new security cameras at multiple city facilities. We remounted the police department's evidence storage area in preparation for accreditation. For Parks and Recreation, we built new public restroom at the Centennial Trailhead in partnership with, with Greenstone Homes. We launched new software for Parks and Recreation scheduling and reservations and made substantial progress in the five-year Park Semester Plan. City Facilities, we initiated the design work for relocating City Hall to the Legacy Church Building. And for Public Safety, there's too many to list, but I will note that we have welcomed Maverick, our new K-9 officers to the Liberty Lake Police Department. So looking ahead for 2026 in our capital projects, we are proposing over $11 million in capital investments for 2026, including pavement overlays on East Mission Avenue from Storage Solutions to Harvard Road, Mission Avenue frontage improvements in the River District. Design projects include the Multer Road Overlay from Mission to Appleway, Country Vista rebuild and operational upgrades, future City Hall renovations, park enhancements at Pavilion Park and Orchard Park, continued support for public arts installations and the development of a new development in, in the new public works yard. We are in a strong financial position. We will begin 2026 with a general fund balance of $8.1 million. Sales tax revenue for 2025 is projected to reach 6.97 million, which is 5.3% above what we budgeted for 2025. General Fund Reserves will be at 37.1% of operating revenue, nearly double the required 20% minimum. And restricted reserve funds remain at approximately 15% as required by ordinance. Because of the strong financial footing, I am recommending a 0% property tax increase for the fifth year in a row. In fact, the Liberty Lake property tax rate is expected to drop from 0.8852 to 0.8571 per $1,000 of property value in 2026. As an example of what your property tax goes to, in 2025, property taxes covered 100% of the library operations and 27.5% of the police department operating costs. We do have challenging, challenges ahead with regards to rising operating costs. While revenues remain strong, operating expenses are increasing at a faster rate. Some of these cost drivers are within our control, but many are not. Public Safety, court services with Spokane County are up 50% due to rising demand. The agreement with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office has increased 31%, largely due to technology updates. Costs impacted by new three-year collective barding agreement, which I'm sure you guys are all in support of. And we will be talking about that later tonight. The addition of one full-time officer, including required equipment. Insurance is another big hitter, although our WCIA rates remain competitive and below what we would have been paying with our previous provider. We are seeing significant increases across the board. Salaries and benefits, in 2026, the budget includes a 2.7% cost of living adjustment, a 2% step increase for eligible employees. We're also proposing adjusting salary schedules to align with the AWC Salary Survey Benchmarks. Half of this adjustment is planned for 2026 with the remainder under consideration for 2027. With regards to technology, we are proposing the implementation of placer AI software to support better data-driven planning and the transition to improved accounting and timekeeping systems. Our upcoming next steps, over the coming weeks, the city council will review the proposed budget in detail. These discussions will be essential as we continue to balance revenue with the increasing costs and address potential impacts from county level decisions, particularly regarding public safety funding for our highest priority service. I encourage each of you to come prepared to our meetings. Let's work together respectfully and efficiently as we plan for Liberty Lake's future and make key decisions for 2026 and beyond. Thank you for your continued partnership in building a stronger Liberty Lake. Any questions? We'll get to those in the budget review, but I thought I'd throw it out there. Okay, next up, we have reports and inquiries. City Council, who's up? Councilmember Dunn.
This week's, or last week, excuse me, STA Board meeting was related to planning introductions of the 0.2% or the 0.2% return to the ballot of a measure originally funding STA started in 2016. This sunset measure will be, need to be renewed, I think by the year 2028. So the board is talking through what are the possible timing points and also how it connects directly to connect 2035, the strategic plan for STA.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Well, this is old because we didn't have time for council reports in the last regular meeting. But a month ago, now I guess it's been, I went to the workshop in Wenatchee on disasters, hazard mitigation, all that stuff. And it was very, it was really interesting. I'll try to get through this fairly, fairly quick. Things I learned, Washington has the fourth most disasters in the United States. Some examples are the Amtrak derailment in Pearson Thurston Counties in 2017, a massive cyber intrusion in Kirkland. I don't know what year. The Oso mudslides, probably most of us remember that in 2014. And it did get assistance from FEMA. And then of course wildfires east of the Cascades to include the ones two years ago, Medical Lake and so on. So 14 and a half million in damage has to be hit locally to get federal help because local resources are overwhelmed. Malden was declared a health emergency due to the amount of asbestos in the, in the debris, which I thought was kind of interesting. So they got FEMA assistance because of that. One of the speakers said it will be extremely hard going forward to get a federal declaration of an emergency given the current administration federally. We do not have the emergency operations coordinate, we do not have an emergency operations coordination center, nor do we have a joint information center system to develop coordinated and accurate public messaging to disseminate to the city and the media. And that's here. Continuity of operations is essential to sustain essential services. Not in this budget cycle, but soon I feel we need an emergency manager. Megan Black, who is the PIO for the Renton PD, said it's essential that whoever is answering the phones at various agencies, whether it be here or fire or cops, they all need to be coordinated and be giving out the same information and it needs to be accurate. She's been on the ground for several disasters. And she said it to always lead with empathy because people are frightened and emotional. One speaker I thought was particularly interesting, her name is Carleen Anders. She's the former mayor of Pateros and is now the Executive Director of Disaster Leadership. I thought she was amazing. She's been on the ground in the Paris Paradise Fire in California. She was there for Lahaina and several hurricanes. She has teams of very well-trained volunteers who will travel to cities such as ours and train teams of volunteers, which is something I would like to look into. She said the estimated value eight years ago of volunteer services, so the amount of effort that volunteers put in would equate to nearly $167 billion if we had to pay them. But they need to know what their duties are. So they have meaningful work. So you just can't send people out here, do this. Or just go help. They need to know what they're doing. So it's important to have affiliated volunteers. And one of the outfits besides her that can help train volunteers to be effective is called Team Rubicon. Didn't know about them before either. They started 15 years ago with 15 Marines who on their own time responded to the earthquake in Haiti. Now they're everywhere and they too will come and train mass groups of volunteers. We also need a community emergency hub, a place for people to gather after a disaster. If we do get a facility built with meeting space, we should have a space large enough for citizens who need help in such a center. Anders said to be prepared for no internet or electricity as leaders surround ourselves with people we can trust, identify critical needs, stay calm, study up, actively listen to others who, and if you don't know, find out. Prepare for the long haul, maintaining our social veneer. And that includes everyone at the table and do everything we can to keep the cell phone system up. I'm almost done. 5,000, 59,585 homes in Washington are at moderate risk of fire. 59,585 homes in Washington are at moderate risk of fire. Estimated cost in recovery would be about $22 billion. The LA Fire Recovery is likely to exceed $100 billion. On fire specifically, for folks that live, like in the woods, they should know this already, but it's important to have defensible space around your property because embers are the biggest problem. Ember storms spread really fast. Downslope wind-driven fires are a common problem, and that's what happened in Lahaina. High wind caused by large pressure gradients, often down the mountain ranges, are a bigger threat than slow-moving fire. Conclusion, post-fire, prepare to help the community, deal with debris removal, restore critical infrastructure. And Chief, Fire Chief Shane Stocking, and I can't remember where he is from, said we must assume that no one is coming to help. And that's the second time I've heard this, and it's frightening. So, and one thing, I don't know if everybody saw this, this was a month ago now in the spokesman, but I think it was Mark said Chief Soto was basically responsible for this, but the Spokane Valley Fire Department got a $5.5 million grant in funds for projects to prevent wildfires, and its focus is on Liberty Lake, yay, Millwood and parts of the valley. Anyway, that's what I learned about a month ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything you wanted to add, any of that, Mark?
At this point, no, that was a download from a cross-section of the forum. As we go forward and continue to look at things like a continuity of operations plan and a consolidated emergency plan, we'll be obviously incorporating the council into those discussions.
Thank you. Any other council reports? All right, not hearing any. My mayor's report's fairly short, having been out of town for a couple of weeks. Attended the Spokane Board Meeting, as I've already mentioned, last week. That's the fun, really fun group that I'm part of. I always love attending with that, her staff rows, and everybody's always very engaging and on top of things, and you do fun work, so appreciate that opportunity. Greater Spokane Incorporated Regional Advocacy Meeting is this coming Thursday, and then you guys should all have received a note from Mark. And I think several of you are signed up for the AWC District One meeting this Friday at Trailhead Facility. So I was glad they reached out, and we were able to accommodate that for District One, and gives us a chance to show off our new facility and
Terry Cooper.
Yep, Terry Cooper's our representative, so, yep, looking forward to that. So that's all I've got to report at this point, since city administrator report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and guests that are both here and joining us online. A couple of things to remind the council about, the mayor just mentioned the AWC meeting that's coming up on Friday. Another thing, just to put in front of you, the International City Management Association's annual conference is next week, and I mention that because I will be out of town Monday through Thursday in attendance. Always reachable by phone, email, text, but I'll be out of the office for those four days. Next Tuesday, October the 28th, a week from today, is National First Responders Day. And so we'll be doing a lot of social media announcing on that, and you know, this kind of fits in. Tonight, later on the agenda, we have consideration of the new collective bargaining agreement with our police guild, and represented here by our partners over at the Spokane Valley Fire Department, and I would throw Public Works into this as well. This is just an opportunity to give specific recognition to our first responders. Thursday, October 30th, is the library's Halloween party, their annual party. That's always a great time, it's well-attended. This year's theme, I believe, is wicked, and so check that out if you have kids, or even if you don't, if you want to do Halloween stuff. It's at the library Thursday between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Daylight Savings ends, that's upon us again, so transitioning from Saturday to Sunday, November the 2nd, set those clocks back an hour. And then, as a reminder, our regular city council meeting is going to be on Monday, November 3rd, for the next meeting, instead of Tuesday, November the 4th, here at City Hall. Any questions about any of those before we move on? All right, very good. And so this is our second meeting of the month. Rochelle, earlier in the week, distributed the department reports, and you have an opportunity to ask any of our department heads questions about that information.
Doesn't look like an
All right, and so sorry, I'll invite Ben Turner up to the podium to share a little bit about our capital facilities plan update with you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, sorry about this. So this is our quarterly update for the capital facilities plan. This was originally scheduled for our last meeting, but we got a little short on time, so I'm going to give that, to give it to you this evening. So I know Mayor mentioned a lot of these during her remarks, but I'm just going to go over a couple of things that we've accomplished in the last three months. We've completed the master facilities plan, that's up for approval this evening during the action items. We continue to do additional projects in the police department, both in the evidence locker mostly, but also some other security improvements with the building that was completed this quarter. For public art, we are really close to getting that together sculpture put together on Kramer and Country Vista. We've had an engineer take a look at that, make sure the foundations are correct, so hopefully we'll be weather pending will have that up this quarter, this coming quarter. For Orchard Park, we've got the trash enclosure project approved, so weather pending as well. We can get that done this fall, if not during the spring. So that's the Parks and Facilities projects. For transportation and pedestrian projects, we had a little bit of a delay in the Mission Avenue overlay project. I think most of you are aware of the labor stoppage with the Operators Union this past that basically delayed this project till the spring. We'll be ready to go with that one as soon as the plant's open, typically in April. We completed all the scanning for the pavement master plan and the sidewalk master plan. That was the guy in the scooter running around for about a week and a half, so we've got all the data there since July. We're slowly analyzing that, that is going to be incorporated in the sidewalk master plan discussion that we show you here in a little bit. And then the, as well as the sidewalk master plan, I think it's on the consent agenda tonight. We're going to do the pavement master plan in-house between myself and Community Development. I'll spell that for you down by the end of this year. And also, the mayor mentioned pedestrian crossing allocation. We just put up another pedestrian crossing by the Cornerstone Church and School. That was put up, as well as a few more stop signs. We've got another stop sign back behind Rocky Hill we're going to be putting up this week. So lots of good things going on there. For the stormwater projects, we were a little bit delayed with the Neyland Avenue project. That's right there at the corner of the city by the golf course, but the design is now complete. That will be put out for bid in November. We'll have prices before Christmas, and that project will start as soon as the weather breaks as well. So lots of stuff going on next year that we couldn't get done this year, but we got a lot of stuff going on next year. And for projects by others, we, if you've been down by the River District, the Kramer Parkway Extension, at least the paving is done. That road is still not open because there's plenty of work to do there, but the paving was completed there, as well as the Indiana Extension, which has been done for a little while, but those projects were completed last quarter as well. And I don't have the map to show you, but Supercuts is no longer visible on the map, so I know that was a concern last time. I'm looking at it, it's not there, but we were able to use different, so that's
Must have missed something.
Not all heroes wear caps.
I know, but I got it.
I don't get it. Who's the deal with
So I had the big map with all the projects on there. I've used the map from Google Maps, and for some reason Supercuts was bigger than Safeway. I got it off a scout now, so there's no more Supercuts on.
Kramer Extension paving, does it connect to Mission, Indiana?
Yes. Yep, so it's connected to Indiana now, and more than likely, once they're done, we're going to put a stop sign there too. So we'll have a stop sign at Orchard Park, as well as a stop sign at where Kramer punches through, that'll be a three-way stop.
And do all these new stop signs have the blinking around them, like the
They only do if it's greater than a 25 mile. That's usually, that's typically where we don't put, so like Mission has it, because that was, I think, 30 miles an hour. Multer, the Multer ones that we put in, those are the blumpy ones, but typically if it's a 25 mile per hour speed there, we don't use the blinking ones.
What is 25 miles per hour on Country Vista, isn't it? Because you put the one at Country Vista and Mission.
The signs are on Mission, though, that's 35.
The Country Vista one's down.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Those were already there.
Yeah, and they still, they still run the stop sign.
And we'd get the school zone, the school zone should be blinking correctly now, Mayor, we just fixed that today. We had to move the sign because it was too far in the shade.
The dogs have not been barking at it, thank you.
Or any questions, that's all I have for you this quarter.
That's great, great work.
Be in January.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, great. All right, so next up, we have Spokane Valley Fire Department. Welcome, Fire Marshal Bill Clifford. Welcome.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having us out here. I'll try to provide some information for you guys about responses that we have, but coming up for the third quarter. Not my career, I ever think I'd see numbers this high, is what we have right now. So it's just going to keep raising, so we just need to prepare for that. Anyways, we're ready for the first slide up there, or second slide. This one here is just going to be the total calls for the last month that we've had within the jurisdictions. I don't have the last year's current number, I don't think I have for that, but the numbers, like I said before, they just keep rising with the demographics and the population that we have in our jurisdiction. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that, that's if you want to call those hotspots, but those are the busy spots within our jurisdiction for this third quarter that we have. Right central, right smack in the valley, and just kind of expands out from that for where the population is going to be. Any questions on that? Next slide. This one's where we're going to be at for the year right now. My understanding is we're 5% above what we were last year at this time. So 19,057 calls for the year so far, and that's all the responses that we have. That's we're an all-hazard agency, so anything that comes into us, we're going to take off and respond to those. Next slide. This one here is going to be total vehicle movement, so if you think of a response going out there, that's going to be one truck responding to that. If you go to the total number of responses, reason that's up to 2721. If we have to send two trucks or three trucks or for a big fire, we're going to send all those vehicles. That's going to be the total movements. That's what that number is for, and then for the total of the year, 23,749. Does that make sense for responses coming out? Okay. Next slide. This is just going to be incident by location for our responses. You can see Station 8, that's basically Pines and I-90 area. That's going to be our busiest station we have, it just kind of goes down from there. So with you guys here at Liberty Lake, not saying that you're not important, that's the number of calls that we have responding into your jurisdiction out here. Questions on that at all? Next slide. This one here is kind of interesting. It might be kind of, when you look at it, might not understand too much about it, but it's automatic aid that's given and automatic aid that's received. So within our jurisdiction that we have, if it's close to a boundary area, or depending on what that call is, we're going to have automatic aid that comes in to help us for that. So that's automatically built into our run cards for responses. And then same thing with outside jurisdictions. If they need our assistance coming to their area, we're going to go give them that assistance also. And definitely just tell you the percentages that we've had for this year so far.
I got a quick question, I'm seeing unserved. We actually have an area or more that's unserved?
Yeah, we call them the gray areas, so basically the unincorporated areas around us. So Newman Lake area has some areas not to put a mark onto them, but in those areas, they may not pay a property tax for fire, and so they're not covered by any fire jurisdiction at all. So in theory, no department really has to respond to them. That wouldn't be the right thing to do, we're going to respond, so we do. And, you know, we try to recoup some of those costs, and I'm not exactly sure that process on that, that would come from the chief or the fire marshal on that part of that.
Yeah, interesting, I've never noticed that before, so it must not happen often.
Not very many, there's not very many properties in those locations, but we still have those in our jurisdiction.
Interesting, all right, Councilmember Ball.
Well, doesn't Newman Lake have, I've seen a fire station out there.
Yeah, that's District 13 out there, so they have their area, but there's some gray areas that are in there where it's not covered by a fire district. So we try to either get them to annex into our jurisdiction or annex into their jurisdiction so they have that coverage. The bad thing for them, their property taxes are extremely high because they have insurance property. They have no insurance rating, so they're at a 10. So they're paying very high premiums on them. And depending on what that insurance rating is, although when you get in a number of leases, you have to pay your property taxes for residents and businesses.
Interesting. All right, thank you for that.
Interesting on that, isn't it? Next slide. This is just a comparison over the years, I know there's a lot of information on there. I didn't really go over that too much on here. We're ahead of last year, almost 5%, so it's going to keep going up. We're normally 5% to 7%. I think there's been some years where we've been actually up to the 10% range, where we've been over the call volumes from the previous year. Excellent. This one here is just going to go from the busiest months that we've had this year. You can see July, that's been our busiest month with 2,289 calls. We used, I mean, there's a station, Otis Orchard's area, Station 4, and that station had been our slowest station for the longest period of time, just because the demographics were out there and the population that happens. They may not have a call for 24-hour period, that's not the case anymore. You know, our busiest stations, and when we first see that first snowfall, that's when our call volume really starts to rise up. So we staff up for those days, so it gets very important for, not my position, but for the chief and the other administration to make sure those trucks are staffed and we get extra vehicles out there in the case we do need to respond. Any questions on that part? If you go to the next, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Back, I think, two slides, you showed, I think, about 4.75% increase. Is a certain percentage of that tied to population increase? Where we kind of normally, if there's more population, that number would creep up?
Sure. Yes, all of the above. Everything's going to make that call volume dance a little bit more, so time of year, population, events coming into the valley. You know, all of that plays a big part on our call volume for what happens.
Would you take a wild guess, maybe half, half the 4.75 has to do with because of increase in population?
I'm bet you we could probably figure that number out, but I wouldn't be able to say yes or no on that.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I would not be able to answer that. Thanks, though, I appreciate that. Yeah, would you like me to get that information for you guys in passing?
No, that's fine, no reason I bring it up. I think some individual may look at that and think, oh my gosh, look at, we had so many more reports, things out of control. But if it has to do with population, it's sort of normal that it would, percentage would increase.
Right, and you're going to see, like, the end of November, coming December, those months there might supersede July's call volume because of the snowfall we've had. And normally, when that happens, we may have 100 calls during that daytime. And when it first came on the Valley Fire Department, we might have 14 calls during the day. You know, that's how busy we become, so, yeah. Good questions. Last slide. This one shows your jurisdiction out here, and it kind of gives you the hotspots of where we've responded. So I think it tells right there where we're going to go, I can't really see the boundaries on here, but I think that's going to be the rest of the valley, I think that might be.
We're on the right there.
Yeah, yeah, you guys are going to be on the right-hand side, and again, centralized to the valley, that's going to be our busiest spots where we have and respond. Any questions on the mapping?
No, so I may have any questions?
Anything you want to see from us next month on the mapping for the fourth quarter, anything different? Do we ever present you guys with inspections out here, what we've done in inspections before? Would you like to?
That would be, that would be amazing, yeah.
Okay, so like in January of this year, we did 10 business inspections, as we're just ramping up for the year and getting going, getting the inspectors out of the office. So we've had 10 annual business inspections in Liberty Lake, and we had 27 violations. Last month, for September, we had 48 annual business inspections with 129 violations. So that, they could be anything from an exit light being burned out, or improperly working, or a sign not being placed on the proper door, or anything to a fire sprinkler system not having its annual servicing done, but those type of things. Or a permit might need to be obtained for their process, which they're doing business for. That's what those, or that's what those inspection numbers are for there. We inspect about 5,500 businesses annually. It might be a little higher than that, but that's normally what we do, and we have 100% compliance by the end of the year with getting our inspections done in our entire jurisdiction.
Right, those are great stats to know, we appreciate it. Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
I think it would be, I think it'd be really advantageous to report monthly when you come in, how many smoke detector inspections you guys do. Oh, sure, because I think a lot of people really miss that, and that is phenomenal service that you guys provide, that free of charge will come in and make sure that the house is covered well.
We could have those numbers for you. We do installs, the truck crews do installs on Saturdays if there's any that need to be done. And then one Wednesday a month, we'll go out there and do a bunch of homes, so whatever home may need that. So if it's a smoke alarm that's in a home, that's a hard-wired smoke alarm with a battery backup, we can't take those off the wall. That's a labor industry's issue, we're not licensed electricians. But if it's just a plug and But if it's just a plug and play, smoke detector with a battery operator, we can take those old ones down and put new ones up for them. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions or requests? Thanks so much for being here. We appreciate it. All right, next up, Liberty Lake Stream Water District. Nope. All right, not tonight. Yeah, we're getting better at that. All right, next up, workshop discussion, city hall facility design update. Welcome back, Ben.
In team, sorry, I forgot, ladies.
You've done most of the work, so.
They have. So I'm just going to introduce Amanda and Nikki again, which I think we all know. So just just here, we've we've, this is really the culmination of the schematic design phase for the city hall renovation. We've been working on it for a few months now, and I think we shared, but most of you have the opportunity to see some of what we're going to show you tonight. There's a few new renderings that you haven't seen before. I did just email this presentation for you. So if you do want to follow along on your laptop as well, it's available, should be in your email if you have access to that. So I will turn the time over to Amanda first.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for having us. Go ahead and advance to the next slide. So what you're seeing here, there have just been some really minor updates from those one on one council member meeting that we had just a couple of weeks ago. So we'll just share at a high level, just based on some of the feedback we received. There's a couple small little adjustments to furniture placement in the council chambers, just to optimize the location of the city clerk and the staff table. We've also adjusted furniture in that front medium conference room so that it's conducive for a more casual environment, given that they're kind of upright lounge chairs. And then there's also like a higher table. So you could have a more formal meeting or a casual meeting in there as well, double duty. Aside from that, there's a few other items that we're going to address in the furniture phase, such as having a mobile cart out in the lobby space for a monitor for everybody to view from the lobby. Aside from that, there are no changes to the plan unless you have any questions, we can move forward.
One of the recommendations had to do with, oh, thank you, Mayor, had to do with the break room of having stove in there, those facilities in the benefits. We had something catered or something like that. Is is that being included?
That's something that we have discussed and for a few different reasons, decided not to include at this point. Partially, it's the budget and just not feeling like that's an amenity that would be utilized very often for the expense and the infrastructure that would be built in.
If it's not there, then it would be needed. If it's there, we have the option to be able to benefit from that. Okay, so I'm a little concerned about if we talk about the budget and something like that is so miniscule. So, thank you.
Understood. Anything else, Councilmember Ball?
In the chambers, now where does the, where do you have room for media? I can't remember. Is that right here, these four little seats in the front?
The four seats in the front are intended to be the staff table. So media would end up in the audience, but we're providing them aisles to circulate around. There wouldn't necessarily be a dedicated spot. They would be on the sides.
Well, who is this on the side over here?
The first, the sort of L shape.
Yeah.
There, that is IT.
Oh.
So that they can be, you know, enclosed and not see all of the lovely cords. And then adjacent is the city clerk.
Okay, because it wasn't.
She was on the other side. Whoever would be in that position would be on the other side, correct? So this way. And this is all furniture, so we can continue to have these discussions and move things around to optimize if there's a better approach.
Anybody else?
Okay. All right, we can move to the next slide. So again, this is schematic level finishes. So this is really intended to represent design intent. When we provided these finishes for some initial feedback and presented several options, people tended to prefer kind of the lighter, the brighter, fresh, something that's loosely tied to the setting and being on a lake. So we're trying to make sure that the finishes that will be touched and interacted with most frequently, such as carpet, are going to be a little bit darker so that they're going to hide soiling more. But to keep as many of the surfaces light and bright and fresh as possible, have a very timeless base palette and a thoughtful incorporation where colors are going to go, as well as incorporation, of course, with local art. And then strategic implementation of colors in upholstery that can tie back to your logo and the natural settings as well. This is subject to change too, just based on, you know, pricing, how that comes back and that sort of thing. So design intent purposes only at this point. And if we move forward to the next slide, so we've got a few renderings here. This one shows, so on the far left would be the lobby or start, you see just a little corner there where you're coming in through the vestibule. And beyond there is the reception and permit counter, and then to the right is the entry into the council chambers. Where you're seeing the colorful graphic on the wall is a placeholder for where we can incorporate some sort of art gallery, some sort of culture piece. We'll work with the Parks and Arts Commission to determine a solution that's going to be really meaningful for the city of Liberty Lake and really enliven the space. You can also see some casual seating there. And if you'd like to advance to the next slide, you can see it from a different angle. And as we've been working with the various stakeholders, one of the comments we talked about with Lisa is that sometimes it's important to have more casual conversations with community members. And so this gives the opportunity for someone perhaps from the PEBs department to come out, sit down and have a conversation without utilizing a conference room. Or it could also be used on evenings like this, where we have a council meeting, maybe somebody needs to pop out or a group needs to gather ahead of time. So lots of flexibility there. And then you can also see there's a nice connection between the lobby and those medium and conference, excuse me, medium and large conference rooms there. So there's nice visibility and connection through the space. And the next slide, please. And then this just shows if we were to take several steps forward, view into the council chambers, the medium conference and the large conference. Go ahead and move forward. This is a view of the council chambers, so it gives you a sense of how many folks were able to accommodate this space. Based on code, we could have up to one hundred and fifty four occupants in the space. We would recommend capping out around a hundred chairs or so. But this does show the new diastate. We've added a lip to it, so that will conceal some of the technology and things like that. This is still under development. It will be a custom piece that we'll work through as we move throughout the project. Again, just representing design intent, you'll also notice the monitors, just to improve visibility for the audience and the council members alike.
Mark, is that the back of your head?
It's, yes, custom rendering here.
And you can also see too, how we're trying to incorporate some color a little bit. Maybe a fun way we could do that is in the chairs rather than something that's going to be permanent. So. And then the wood that you're seeing on the back, for anyone who missed it, is an acoustical product. So it provides some visual texture, a nice tie to natural materials, but then also acoustical benefit for the space. Next slide, please. This is the vantage point as if you were a council member and you're looking back, you're seeing somebody up at the podium presenting. You're seeing the staff table there. And again, really nice connection to the lobby. We are not including any windows into the space at this time, but with that full wall of glazing, that will help bring in natural light during the daytime hours. Next slide, please. This is from the copy counter towards reception. So we do have a small open office area there with some cubicles. And then what's really, this image is meant to show how we're keeping things low and open, so that if there's staff back there, we're we're helping with security by providing a lot of visibility throughout the space, so that nobody would feel alone necessarily if you're ever up at the reception desk or at those workstations or back in the coffee area. And then next slide, please. And then if you were to basically be in that same spot and pivot to your right, this shows a nice work table and then some future cubicles that we could add into the space once we need to densify a little bit more and the headcount increases. So this is an open copy area, and then the casework beyond is some really deep casework to house anything that is dropped off, you know, through the mail, UPS, FedEx, et cetera. And then you're also seeing into some private offices there with some side lights. And then that's also the employee entrance there, kind of a secondary entrance on the north end of the building. And the next slide, please. Again, no upholstery is here. This is schematic level, but this is the executive lounge. So this is in the middle of four or five offices with a private copy area, separate reception station. And then you can see how there's kind of a peekaboo down to an open collaboration zone there. And again, the nice connectivity adding those side lights in and the relights in the doors. And then where you see that gray outline on the floor, that's an accent carpet in the future. That's where four additional workstations could go if you ever outgrew your current headcount and facility needs, you could swap that out. Next slide, please. And this is a view of the staff break room. So keeping it simple, keeping the storage kind of minimal as to what we feel like you would need while building a little bit out for the future. So it'd be nice for catering, you know, have your basic amenities in there as well as a little bit of seating. Next slide. And I'll kick it off to Nikki.
All right, I get to be sandwiched between two very tall people, so apologize. So I'll just go through a quick summary of really what Amanda's already talked about. So this project, as you know, entails the development of fourteen thousand four hundred square feet of facility with an estimated completion timeline of two years, really targeting that spring of twenty twenty seven. Once fully built out, the space will accommodate thirty six full time employees with the capacity to expand to forty four full time employees through additional workstations and over forty eight full time employees through furniture densification. So that means if you shrunk your workstations, you could pack in more people. So designed as a thirty year facility, the building will substantially improve the workplace environment for staff and enhance their ability to serve the community effectively. The total project cost is estimated at five point nine nine six million, as shown there. This includes soft costs such as design contingencies during construction, furniture costs for both the council chambers and city department workplaces, design and engineering fees, as well as owner furnished owners installed items. And lastly, infrastructure upgrades for site utilities for mechanical, electrical and plumbing utility upgrades. So while this exceeds the five million budget, I know we go have questions from Mr. Kennedy. Projected during during our early conceptual planning, the revised estimate reflects necessary upgrades to the mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems. And I'm happy to dive into that part further. So these are essential to meet current energy code and to support the building as it's intended use as a city hall. So before I dive into more of that, I just wanted to quickly touch on the timeline here before I hand it over to Ben and open it up for questions. So looking ahead, our intent is to go out for bid the beginning of the year. I think we've touched on that a little bit, one on ones. And really, the intent is that we're seeing an active and competitive bid market, which is really going to maximize the value, ensuring this project will stay on budget and on schedule. So. And do you have any comments to close this out?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. One of the items we discussed, we had individuals in on it, was having the, where the council chambers be elevated. Is that in the final?
No, so we had taken a look at that. And with some of the clearance concerns, being able to have an elevated platform with accessibility, it would take out quite a bit of real estate from the council chambers. So it is something that we did study after we met.
I think it's very important that we do have that because I'll use this room for an example. It's great for council to have eye contact with everybody. And it's great, look at, look at the heads nodding here. It's great that these individuals here, citizens, have eye contact with their council members. So they're not like in their movie theater, trying to look around and see what's there. We're looking at roughly six million dollars. Now, I find it interesting when you said, you looked at me when you said, well, we're going to be over budget. So there must be a message there. We're looking to build something for the future of Liberty Lake. I know it's important. We try to save where we can. But this is something for the citizens of Liberty Lake, that for the future, there's going to be buildings will be there for thirty, forty years before we probably have to go in and do it. I would hope that we don't suddenly start to nickel and dime ourselves now. So later on down the road, we go, well, you know, we would have spent an extra ten thousand dollars to elevate this, and that would have been critical when it comes to. And so I really want us to be, we think we're thinking outside the box now, which I'm pleased to see what we're doing. Let's go one step further. And let's make sure that this is really the best that we can do for long term.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. Can I ask a clarifying question on that, though? You didn't really mention anything about costs associated with that. It was giving up space for what visitors and seating for the audience? Was that the trade off?
For the elevated diastate. Yes, yes, because you need a certain amount of clearance for in the ADA ramp in order to meet accessibility. So it does take up quite a bit of space. And so again, you're just making that balance between the amount of capacity that you can fit and also future flexibility of that room. So something to consider.
So if you if you could, if it's not a lot of extra work, let us know what the impact would be on on the number of visitor, number of the seating capacity, if we would do that.
Yeah, we can provide you with those studies.
Yeah. All right, Councilmember Tim.
Two questions. Thank you for the presentation. One, we, when we were talking about this building for the library, we had a little bit of heartburn, I think, about the the costs for the code upgrades. And so I would assume that we are somewhat similar in those costs and the code upgrades in this type of facility as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to go over that specifically. So right now, the building, again, it was meant has to to be two separated spaces and really industrial use. So just kind of keep that in mind as we're talking about this going forward. So right now, the building is served by existing gas fired mechanical units. And right now, those are at the end of their life expectancy. And so with the new energy code upgrades, the mechanical systems are supposed to be electrified in order to meet that energy code. And so knowing that we're up against energy code and those units in past their prime, yes, it is. We are dealing with some of that infrastructure.
Do you, can you give us a percentage of of that five point nine on what is, you know, basically just a requirement because of code?
It's, it's a, yeah, it's a pretty significant portion. And I would say also to, we know we're going to have to upsize the utility lines since we are adding additional water closets, toilet fixtures, as you say, so that has to be taken into account. So there's some infrastructure improvements needed there to meet those code requirements as well, as well as the electrical capacity. So if we do move to electrified rooftop units, the electrical capacity needs to be able to support that. And currently, the building is not fire sprinkler. So those are pretty significant. But I will say that we are working very diligently with the city and with our MEP partners to to really dig into that and make options that are not going to be too much of a impact to that. So we are just at schematic level. So I just want to make sure.
Sure. Can I ask one more quick question? And it's a two part question, I guess. One, is there, is there anything on the on the list of items that are included in this that is a very large cost item that could be cut out if we decided we want to try to cut the price tag back? And then alternatively to that question, is there anything that you didn't include that you thought, you know, hey, for another, you know, five hundred thousand dollars or so, this would be a really neat addition to this building. But for the sake of the budget, we're gonna, we're gonna not include it.
Yeah, we do have some additives, kind of more specifically around adding windows to the back of the building. I know we had
Right.
touched on that a little bit. I think some of those in and also finished updates. So whether it's like a lower price carpet versus a higher price carpet, those are some things that we have broken out and can certainly upgrade those. But right now, again, we're trying to be mindful of the costs and the longevity for this project. So balancing those two. When we look at the cost per square foot, it is not outrageous. It's very economically designed. I don't think we've got anything overdesigned in the building. It's it's pretty straightforward. And we have included it, you know, we're trying to incorporate, obviously, your feedback, which has been really valuable into making this, again, a thirty year facility. So.
So if we wanted to add windows to the council chamber, for example, I assume we could do that, and it wouldn't be an outrageous increase, or would it?
No, I think we we already have some of that priced out, costed out. So we have that. Again, it's, you know, how much are we looking to spend now? So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I had councilmember Ball first, then I'm kidding you.
Oh, I'm first, okay. The roof, is it, is it strong enough to hold these?
Not for the new, not for the new unit. So with the new units that would need to be added, it would need to have some structural upgrades done to it. So right now, that is, yes, that, that is what we're looking at.
That's factored in, right? So we're not replacing the entire roof, just the part?
Not for that price.
Okay, just the part that's going to hold up the heating things. Okay, thank you. All right.
Great. Real quick, before we jump, since you've had a couple of chances, anybody else before I go back to Councilmember Kennedy? All right, you're up.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. Reminded me of two of the things we talked about when the four of us sat down. When we were talking about putting in windows, we realized that that was a large cost. But one of the ideas was to put in the windows that are near the top, there may be a.
We did, yep. That is one of the things that we were talking about, clear story windows.
Because that would be substantially less to do something like that, correct?
Yeah, and that's what we, we're looking at as part of those alternates broken out.
And the second thing was, I don't recall what this was, Ben brought this up when we were talking about it. If the dais is elevated, you mentioned something about we could save some money. ADA ramp or something like that.
Cost more.
Because really, what we're looking at for the ADA ramp is strictly access up to the podium.
Correct.
Or not podium, but the.
The dais.
Dais. Which doesn't take up a huge amount of space.
Well, it, to meet your clearances, it does. A good example, we had actually just toured the Spokane Valley City Hall, and that's a great example where they had to add that. So it's, yeah. You, you need a certain amount of linear feet to be able to meet that rise and run of however elevated that dais needs to be, so.
I would like to think that Liberty Lake is such a young, vibrant unity that we could have individuals could make that twelve, seventeenth step versus the old folks that are in Spokane Valley.
Got that YouTube?
It'll be on social media tomorrow.
All right, anybody else have any questions at this point?
Uh, Mary.
Go ahead.
Well, and just to address that, it seems like with the different camera systems and all of these different televisions in place, it seems like you could accomplish some of that through, through that system. You could have something showing the audience, something showing the council members. And so everybody should be able to see somebody from somewhere.
Yeah, and you saw in the running, obviously, there's different viewpoints for those drop-down screens, which we know is going to be critical again for providing better visibility. Some of those monitors are much larger than what you guys have here. So yeah, something to certainly consider.
It meets the pull-down screen we had forever.
So it's right here. Nobody can see it.
So we also mentioned there will be a spot for the.
The cat.
Excellent.
Thank goodness.
Good to know. How much is that going to cost?
So, well, we could probably. So, so that's, that's really the end of our presentation. Like I said, we've reached the end of the schematic design phase. The intent of the schedule is to start the design development phase immediately. With your permission, we'd like to do that. Understand that the, the budget is more than we expected. That's due to a lot of analysis. So we think that's a pretty good estimate for this phase in the project. Obviously, we will continue to hone that over the next phase. But without any, unless there's any objections, we'll be moving on with the next phase of the project.
Are there any objections to moving forward? Have fun. All right, thanks, you guys. All right, sidewalk master plan, I'm not sure where you're, oh, I'm not sure where Ben's going, but is that Lisa?
So we have, we're going to do a team presentation on this. It's, well, Evan's pulling it up. We have it split up into two sections. The first part of it, I want to share with you where we're at for the sidewalk master plan and kind of the next steps, scope, timeline, et cetera. And then the second part of the presentation, we really want to talk about really the opportunities or basically different approaches to more comprehensively maintaining our sidewalks and what potential funding sources. These are things that we would like to use the sidewalk master plan as an opportunity to engage the community in and to come back with recommendations. So, so we've got two parts to it. And next slide, please. So first, I just want to talk about the fact that we've been talking about the sidewalk master plan for a while. It's not that we have not been doing anything. We have front-loaded all of the data collection and analysis, and we have completed that process in terms of the sidewalk scans with the conditions assessment and condition index width of each segment, locations and types of distress on each segment. We've got, we've got a really robust GIS-based data on our multimodal system, our bike lanes, our trails, our multimodal paths and sidewalks. Also, as part of the parks master plan, one of the things that they did was they actually did a walk shed analysis to parks. They also did a bike and trails network analysis. And all of these are things that are going to feed into this sidewalk master plan and give us the data behind the analyses that we're going to do. And lastly, Sue has been working diligently on a sidewalk repair white paper that was included in your packets. And we're going to cover a little bit of that and kind of distill that down a little bit to what we think we want to talk about as part of this sidewalk master plan. Next slide, please. So first, the scope. We've already, we've completed the data collection and analysis process. And at this point, we're at a place where we need to take that data and identify the concerns, network goals and desired outcomes. We want to develop a rating, rating criteria to aid in prioritization, and that would be, you know, so things like route to school, route to parks. Is it, are these, is this a pedestrian-oriented business area? Conditions certainly are part of it. Also, are there sidewalk gaps in this area? And trying to come up with a set of criteria and a weighted prioritization of those various criteria to then feed in the data and identify priority areas. We need to develop strategy solutions and, and an implementation approach to sidewalk repair. And most importantly, we need to engage the community and incorporate their feedback. This is, this, we want the, the community to buy into the approach. And we want to, we want to, so, and that's going to take a little bit of effort. Next slide, please. So one of the things we want to do is we want to incorporate a focus group of really key informants to help us put the data together in a way that we can actually take it out to the citizens and get the community and resident feedback. So we're proposing a group, I'm looking at probably nine to twelve people at max for this focus group. We're going to invite members of the Bike-Ped Safety Committee. We were looking for a member of the Community Engagement Committee and the, and the Commission and the Planning Commission. We also are hoping to get some representatives from the various school PTOs. Lance Beck with Valley Chamber has agreed to kind of represent the business perspective on this, on this. And I've talked to Brian Jennings with STA, and either Brian or one of his staff members is going to also participate. We think that it would be valuable to potentially have some HOA representatives and any other really interested residents. So we kind of put together a group that we can focus the conversations on to put together some early kind of drafts that we can then take out to the, to the community. Next slide, please. Public engagement. Now, and I, and by the way, I should mention, I'm sure that you all saw that we actually have a task order for SCJ Alliance to help facilitate this process. We did a lot of heavy lifting in the data collection. The other thing that we want to do is we, we want to utilize SCJ Alliance to develop the engagement materials, working with community engagement. But we really want to leverage Community Engagement Commission to actually to implement the engagement activities and to really deliver the community engagement. And they're, they're ideally set up for that because we think it's really important that we have both citywide engagement, but also neighborhood-based engagement. If you think about different areas have different degrees of problematic sidewalks and whatnot. And so I think that it's going to be really good to be able to hear both from the neighborhoods, but also look at this citywide. Next slide, please. Schedule-wise, we're hoping that if council approves the task order tonight, that we'll have a staff and consultant kickoff within the next two weeks. And we're hoping to hold our first focus group meeting either before Thanksgiving or early in December, trying to work around the holidays. And that's really more of a formation and overview of what we're going to do. We'll probably have two to three focus group meetings in January and early February. And then we really want to see the community engagement in February and March with the final report after we've incorporated that feedback in the early spring. And so that's kind of the timeline. And next slide, please. So before we get on to talking about the second half of this, I wanted to see if you had any questions on the scope process, et cetera, for the sidewalk master plan.
Not seeing any.
Okay, great. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Ben.
Right, next slide, please. Right, so I mentioned the sidewalk master plan, the scanning that we just completed. This is going to kind of show you some of the findings that are real kind of like, start high and then get way down in the weeds a little bit. So obviously, I think everybody's seen something like this throughout the city. So we're going to kind of show you how many of those we have. So next slide, please. So this is a, this is really a heat map that we received from City Logix, who did the survey work for us. So you can see, you know, older parts of the city are a little redder. And I just want to, one quick note, just because it's green doesn't mean there aren't bad sections of sidewalks. So the way this scoring system works is the more they find in a section, the redder it gets. So we've still got bad pieces where you've got trees uplifting, things like that. So there's a couple other maps I can show you that show dots of every, all, I think, I can't remember how many thousand little points that they found. I'll show you on the next slide, but this is just kind of where, where the scope of the problem is, but doesn't necessarily say, give you the whole picture. So the next slide will show you a little bit what they found. So you'll see minor repairs. Those are typically things that we've ground down and we've taken care of those in the past. You know, moderate cracking is, you know, things that can be sealed, doesn't necessarily have to replace the panel. That particular one would probably replace that panel. And then there's the severe ones. Those are the ones that trees have uplifted. You know, these are serious trip hazards, especially when there's snow on the sidewalk and you can't see that. I remember a lady breaking her wrist last winter because she couldn't see, you know, the snow was covered. She, she tripped on it and fell down and broke her wrist. So those are the ones that, those are really the, you know, this, this is a triage evolution where we need to tackle the severe ones first. Typically, the severe ones are also going to be, they're going to require pavement replacement or a panel replacement of the sidewalk panel as well as a tree removal in some cases. So next slide, please. So this is all, so seventy, seventy-eight hundred different little discrepancies on sidewalks. Now, most of those are minor. Those are things that we don't necessarily need to hit right now, but they will become severe over time as those trees continue to mature. We found, you know, seven hundred fifty-nine severe cracks, roughly ten percent. And then we had utility hazards, things like that. Basketball hoops sitting in ramps, things like that. So, so we've found, you know, things like that, those are pretty easy fixes. Sometimes we have to talk to the utility company, things like that. But this is kind of the scope of the issue over the last twenty years, and it's only going to get worse. Those severe ones are, that severe is going to climb them, you know, this, this is just something that we have to start looking at now or we're going to have an unsurmountable problem. Any questions about these numbers? I think this is my last slide as well, so, or, or the survey in general?
Ben, is there an anticipated timeframe to think this could be accomplished?
We haven't gone into that specifically. I know we started setting up like maintenance allocations to take care of streets. It kind of depends on how we tackle it, which is something that I think Sue's going to give you some examples of.
Or the severe ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, I mean, that's, that's really, we're already going to start looking at those and seeing, you know, the severest of the severe, because some, it's, they're severe and then there's really severe, so. And a lot of times in the past, we've gotten, our citizens have helped us out because we've had the grinding program. So they, we had quite a few reach out to us that were just completed within the last month or two. And they've been really helpful on those things. But yeah, this is, I mean, obviously, we tackle the severe ones first and then go from there. But we need to take this data as part of this master, and I think that's one of the things that the SCJ Alliance is going to look at is, okay, is there a maintenance plan that we need to put together? But we could spend ten years doing this, depending on how much money I allocate to the problem.
I think we had, uh, Mayor Pro Tim and then Councilmember Dunn.
Just real quick, Ben, so the, I'm, I'm looking specifically at the severe seven fifty-nine. I would guess, correct me if I'm wrong, that the majority of those are no question the tree issue.
Is there?
And you mentioned that if it's severe enough, not only do we have to replace the concrete, but we have to get rid of the tree.
Correct.
So are we talking about here, if we just look at severe and moderate and let's say seventy-five percent of those are trees, could be, could be more than that, I assume it's more than that, we're talking about getting rid of about twenty-five hundred trees in the city to?
It's, it's possible, yeah. Maybe a little bit less than that. And then we'd have to look at, you know, planting trees back as well. So we'd have to, that and the cost as well. And like I said, we need, really need to figure out how we're going to tackle this problem before we do that. But there's, there's a good chance of that. And like a lot of our tree canopy is, is getting close to its useful life. And a lot of those trees, to be completely honest, were not the proper tree to be planted in that set. And so that's something that we can remedy as part of this as well.
Councilmember Dunn?
Are there sections of the sidewalk defects that have been observed that are the responsibility of the property owner?
Almost exclusively. So for the most part, when there's one in the front of the, you know, if there's something in front of the city, but we can tackle that. We've got the budget, we've got all these things. I mean, this, this is very cost prohibitive for your average resident. I know we've had a few that have quoted, have been quoted three to four thousand dollars to replace a panel. And a lot of that's opportunity cost for contractors, you know, like if I have to spend all day replacing your one panel, I can't do all this other work. So they, they, the prices are exorbitant at that scale. So that's why we're going to go through some of the options that some of the other cities have done to make that more economical.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, so this, this has been a huge problem, even in the River District, which is a newer area of the city. And, you know, I, I remember attending an HOA meeting a couple of years ago and, and asking the developer who determined what, what sorts of trees were going to go in here? And why are there root barriers just for the road and not for the sidewalk side of things? And so, yeah, this is, this is kind of a very tricky topic. And go, and going through this white paper that was put together and looking at Federal Way, for instance, and, and talking about, you know, that those estimates just for one panel range from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. I mean, we had a neighbor that, you know, hired a family member or something to do it for five hundred bucks. But, you know, my concern with everybody going and doing it, however, you know, you're, you're going to have all these panels that look funky and, you know, there's not going to be any continuity. So I definitely would be interested in seeing some sort of program, especially considering the fact that if somebody does get hurt, they're going to go where the money is and the city's got, got the money, right? So regardless of whether we have in our code that, hey, you know, property owner, it's your responsibility. It's one of those, back in the day, I did a lot of graphic design and stuff and, and I'd call Adobe and I'd call Apple and they're just pointing at each other and, you know, you're the one that, that, that suffers, the, the person in the middle. And so we're talking about the property owner, you know, the city, the city or the HOA required that there was a sidewalk and the tree. And so we're kind of stuck in the middle. And so I definitely would, would be interested in seeing a program where the city partners with the, with the homeowners or, or the property owners to, to get that figured out.
Let's remember which one first. Okay, Councilmember Ball, then Cardinal.
Yeah, I, um, this has been a bone of contention with me for a while, and I agree with you, there needs to be something worked out because a lot of these homes, especially the older ones, they didn't plant the tree, you know, so why should they be on the, uh, you know, why should they be responsible for this huge improvement when, you know, it's not their fault? Um, I, I, I do think we need to have some kind of a program where we can help some of these homeowners, you know, but whatever, these, these sidewalks have got to be fixed. I mean, they're dangerous. I've tripped on them, you know, and I've told you guys twice about, you know, someone told me their grandma almost got bucked out of her wheelchair going over one. So this is not a small problem. This is, I hate these sidewalks. Huh? Yes.
Next slide, please.
Go ahead, hold on. We've got Councilmember Kurt still.
And I think we're talking about sort of the, the problem now and then, and then the reaction to it too. But I think that we are also in the middle of a build out with River District not completed and a lot of building permits in place. And I'm wondering if there's a way for us to prevent the wrong trees from being planted and what the status is for that, because let's, let's nip that part in the bud now, no pun, and kind of a pun, um, but then.
So, so let me address that first. We, we are totally updating our development code. Um, back in twenty eighteen, we updated our tree, uh, our, our street tree standards. And it's a little better than what it was. Um, we had looked at, number one, um, the state arborist at the time had advised us not to provide a list, but to provide examples for the class one, class two, class three. Because one of the things that they were seeing happening and had happened in our community is that there was overrepresentation of specific species. And that's not very good from biodiversity standpoint. Um, one of the other things that we did uh, look at, we originally proposed to put in uh, root barriers. And by the way, the root barriers are not on either side, just for the record. But um, and we got pushback from the developer um, regarding that and the, the, the city backed off on that. So that was taken out of. And we put in the second best, we did include a standard for that, but the alternative, if you're not putting in root barriers, was to do a deep root watering system, because if you do deep root watering system, it draws the roots down as opposed to. But the problem with that is that then the keys are handed over to the homeowner and the homeowner may or may not follow through with that. So anyhow, so we can revisit the, the root barriers and I think it really does make a lot of sense. The other thing is that now that we have an urban forester on staff, he's going to be helping us with this street tree ordinance. And he's going to be recommending specific species that are appropriate in Liberty Lake, particularly because we're, we are seeing changes in what actually is thriving here. And so we need some, we need him to look at that as well as just um, appropriate trees in terms of this, the, the, the uh, for the planting strips, et cetera. So that will, that will get updated next year.
What's a root barrier? What does that do?
It, it basically, it basically is really, really hard for the tree roots. It's not impossible, but it's really, really hard for them to get through. Typically, it's a, it's a thin la- layer of HDPE plastic. Um, or some uh, or, or a thick netting that um, that makes it very, very difficult for the roots to to spread out, yeah. And forces them to effectively grow down, which is what you want to have happen. Next slide, please. So one of the things that, and um, and uh, several council members brought this up. The challenge that we have is that um, while we require the adjacent property owner to be responsible for it, and so does the city of Spokane and the Spokane County. And, but one of the things is that at the end of the day, uh, uh, the, the RCW, uh, RCWs allow us to do that, but courts have ruled that it doesn't completely um, relieve the city of our responsibility to make sure that our sidewalks are safe. Um, and so, um, and, and WCIA, our insurance has seen an eighty-four percent rise in claims uh, of settlement uh, related to sidewalk hazards. And I shared with you a couple uh, settlements from the city of Spokane uh, in recent years. Next slide, please. So basically, there's three uh, approaches to repair generally. And then there's subcategories when, within each of these. You can require the property owner to take responsibility for it. Um, but you also have to have an enforcement program and a, a means to make them actually do it if they do not. Or a means to have it done, um, if they do not. Uh, then there's the partnership approach where the city partners with the homeowner to try and share in the cost of that. And the third is for the city to, to take ownership of it. One of the things I will say is that both in terms of the partnership model and the city uh, model, it enables us to address some of the cost issues that Ben talked about with the, the uh, the the one offs for, for a uh, cost for a panel. If we were to bid this, at these areas in together, whether we're sharing the cost with the owner or whether we are um, bearing the cost um, as a city, we can, we can bid that in a way, we, we reduce economies of scale or we, we mobilization costs, we have the economy of scale, we make it attractive to bid on and that brings down the per unit cost, et cetera. So it's, it's a much more cost effective way to look at repairing it if we go in those, those different directions. Next slide, please. So our current code does require the adjacent property owner, it puts responsibility squarely on them. If the owner fails to make the repair, a class one violation uh, can be issued, but two problems with that. One is we have no way to collect that. And number two, it still doesn't get the sidewalk fixed. Next slide, please. Um, so the RCWs really do allow the city to place the burden of repairing and replacing damaged sidewalks on the abutting property owner. Um, as I said, our code currently doesn't have a, a mechanism for facing the repair. As it stands right now, if we wanted to, um, after we've done, done everything we could to try and get the property owner and they still have not addressed it, the only mechanism at our disposal is we could bring a resolution to city council, instructing the homeowner to make the repair. And if the repair's not made, the city council resolution would authorize staff to repair it and put a lien on the property. That's what we have right now. And um, trust me, if we took each of these cases and brought them to you with a resolution, it's going to jam up at the, our council meetings and that, that makes very little sense. We could also update our ordinance to give us more teeth so that if they didn't, if the property owner after being duly notified didn't repair their sidewalk, the city would have the ability to um, uh, repair it and bill the property owner. And if the property owner doesn't pay it, again, we have the authority to lean the property owner. Means we won't collect until they sell the property, but it's, it, it's at least a path forward that we can ensure that the repairs occur. Next slide, please. Uh, the second um, example is partnerships and um, the, whether it's a fifty-fifty cost share program uh, with the city and the, and the property owner. If it's city-led and then uh, uh, we build a property owner at a reduced cost, or a, also there's some examples of some incentives to have the property owner repair the sidewalk themselves. And I'm going to turn this over to Sue right now and give her an opportunity to kind of share some examples.
Um, next slide. So I looked at what some other cities around Washington did as in regards to partnerships. Um, Mount Vernon and Cedar Woolley were kind of similar, although one removes the panel and puts the crushed surface down and then the homeowner would pour the surface and then the other city was the opposite where the homeowner would take the concrete panels out and install the, the um, base and then the city would pour the panel. So those are two ways to um, partner with the homeowner to try and lower the cost for the homeowner. Richland has a rebate program where if the homeowner repairs the sidewalk panels and presents their receipts to the city, um, the city will provide a twenty-five percent rebate. Um, Federal Way also has a program where they lump together. They, they have a third party contractor that they use to repair sidewalk panels and they lump together um, panels to do. And then um, that also helps lower the cost for the homeowner and then they'll bill the homeowner the actual cost. Um, so there are things that cities have tried to do. Um, whether the city takes the lead and pours the panel or they leave that to the homeowner, they, they try to cost share. So there is some of that around the state. Um, and then next slide.
So the third approach would be that the city repairs the sidewalk, either in-house or hires an outside contractor to make the repairs. And I have to point out, I have to point out that if we did it in-house, it would require additional staffing in public works for sure. Um, uh, again, I think that in approaching it this way, even if we're hiring an outside contractor, again, the um, we can really bring the cost per panel down by bidding it in, in specific areas and, and coming up with a plan to phase it over time. Next slide, please. So if we were to take it on, there's a, a number of approaches to funding. And I think there's basically uh, four funding structures. One would be a transportation benefit district. One would be a local improvement district. So a local improvement district would be like you, you did it in a neighborhood. Local improvement district does require uh, that the, the, the uh, the taxpayers in that neighborhood um, have to approve a levy to do that. And it's for a specified period of time to pay back a bond to do that work. Um, also, uh, utility district. We, we use, our, our stormwater funding right now is set up as a utility district. The state also allows you to do a utility district effectively for sidewalks. Even though it's not really a utility, but, but that's, it's structured exactly the same. And uh, another approach would just be to do a general fund allocation and that's certainly something that is within your purview also. Um, funding sources. Um, again, voter approved tax levy. A sales and use tax or vehicle licensing taxes are, are ways that we could fund the transportation uh, the, uh, transportation benefit district. Um, bonds and they could be councilmatic or uh, voter approved grants, although I, I put that up there. We'll, we always look for them. We're going to be hard pressed to qualify for most of the grants for sidewalks because we have a higher median income than a lot of other communities. We could do it through impact fees. Um, and I, we, I had on the slide, if I had enough room, I would have left it up there. We could also charge tolls, but tolls. But trust me, it's not really a good idea.
I'm good with the toll.
Next slide, please.
Oh, real quick, we've got, Count Mayor Pro Tim has a question.
Just, uh, well, actually, go ahead and Lisa, and then I'll, I'll ask a question.
Okay, so Sue's going to give a, a few examples around the state of that approach also.
So there are some cities that take responsibility for just maintaining the sidewalks, repairing the sidewalks. Um, Yelm actually has funding through their um, road and street construction fund. They just take care of it automatically. Um, Bothell, they went out and passed a tax levy. Um, and some of that funding was used to repair and replace sidewalks. Most of what I saw is creating a transportation benefit district. Um, Shoreline, for example, um, has a transportation benefit district and they added sidewalk repair later and they charged an additional twenty dollar in veh- vehicle license fees to fund the maintenance and repair of sidewalks. Um, but like I said, most, most of the funding sources I've seen is creating a transportation benefit district. Um, the state is also put together a, a, a task force to study sidewalk repair funding. Um, but that that report won't be um, done until probably mid-two thousand twenty-six. So they're looking at other, what other states do to try and fund sidewalk repair. And to see if it might be pertaining to, to Washington. So that is being studied as well.
And unfortunately with that, no, um, unfortunately with that, no legislative action would likely be taken if they came up with a really good alternate funding mechanism until probably twenty twenty-seven. Um, and in that time, our sidewalks will continue to get worse. Did you want, next slide.
Did you want to go?
Oh, and, and, yeah. Okay, so here's, here's, here's what I don't want to see. Um, Ferndale, Washington has been looking at this issue for over ten years. So they had a subdivision from the nineteen nineties where they planted sweet gum trees that were starting to lift all the panels in the neighborhood. So they first addressed it by trying to grind all the panels down. Um, that's only a temporary solution. Um, they've tried to get the homeowners to just go ahead and take responsibility for repairing the sidewalks, but that's not working, obviously. Um, but the city's taking the position that it's the homeowner's responsibility. And the city council has been reluctant to pass a resolution mandating the repairs so that the city can lean the property if they don't repair. So they're kind of in a stalemate and it's only gotten worse. So hopefully, the city can make a decision which, what direction they want to go.
And I, one last slide. And discussion, and I just want to tee this up. I, your questions and discussion are welcome. One of the things I really would like to hear from council is if any of these approaches are non-starters that, that you think that we shouldn't consider as part of this sidewalk? Or if you have a partic- particular direction that resonates with you more? We'll still go through the process and we will still engage the citizens. But again, we've, the, of the three approaches, is there any of those, and the general approaches, are there any of those that really um, you don't want to even consider?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great place to start, Lisa. Just remember, everybody, we've got a couple of other really heavy things on the agenda tonight, so we're not looking for a decision or anything, but but yeah, if we can let, let Lisa know what you want to take off the table, maybe, and Councilmember Kurtz.
I think the city-led, fully funded should be off the table. I think we need to do the partnership one. I mean, even if you looked at, I did some quick math, um, seventy-nine hundred panels, which there was a different number than that. A thousand dollars a panel, that's more than our building we're talking about for City Hall, it's seven point nine million dollars. We don't have the money to repair every sidewalk in the city. So I like the idea of trying to find some cost savings. I would be supportive of seeing language in an ordinance to make things, um, to some recommendations that you guys have on how to do this, something that maybe resonated with some of the other cities that we could try here. Um, but those would be my two, um, things, community-led and then an ordinance that supports um, the importance of it, so we don't have the liability. Reduce our liability.
And we have Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Dunn.
So, uh, one quick question and then one quick comment, Lisa. Back on that s- uh, screen that had the three cities, uh, and Rich, I think Richland was one of them. I liked the incentive um, um, plan that Richland came up with and maybe it's more than twenty-five percent, maybe it's fifty percent or something to incentivize people to go and, and uh, start to get, uh, get these repairs done. I guess my question here is that this particular program or all of these particular programs address the concrete panel, they don't address the trees. And so we can go ahead.
In all the programs I looked at, the tree is typically removed at the homeowner's expense. But there are things you can do, like grind roots down to be able to re- repour the panel. There are things, and now that we have an arborist, they might be able to get better insight about what we can do to save a tree instead of taking it down. But, but in all this, the cases I looked at, the, the homeowner is responsible for taking down the tree.
So, I mean, with that in mind, sometimes taking down a tree can be even more expensive than
Yeah.
than replacing a, a square of the sidewalk. And then also, in addition to that, replacing the tree. What do they have to replace it with? And so I, I just want to be careful here that we're, that we're not just concentrating on the concrete uh, portion of it, that we're also talking about two other potential very large costs. And if that's the case, then uh, perhaps, you know, the, the plan is, is more of a the city does the concrete, the homeowner is responsible for the tree or vice versa.
Councilmember Dunn, unless you want to answer that?
I do want to make one other comment and that I think that with, even with a rebate program or something like that, we, it would be more effective, um, if we also had the opportunity to at least, um, uh, bid the areas, the larger areas. I think that, that, just doing that Bid the areas, the larger areas. I think that that just doing that, even if the homeowners have to pave the cost. Would significantly reduce burden on them.
So I I guess my follow-up to a question to that is, could we bring on a company that could be basically on on. On a contract with us to where if the homeowner wanted to. Go forward and let's say we went with the Richland plan and it's some type of rebate program. They would contact that company who would be authorized to do these repairs in the city. The company could come in, do it, the homeowner would pay and then get the rebate for us. And then that. Makes it so that we don't have the one-off problems.
I think that is possible and I think that if you if you think back, we used to do that with the arborist. We had a contract for the arborist that would come in and would would. Do tree tree trimmings, et cetera. And we could, we actually worked one year, the River District HOA. Actually agreed that because they have an arborist contract also, that they would, that they could include any of the homeowners in that. Contract and they would just have to pay the cost of their service, but it was all bid together.
Yeah. And then as far as the funding piece goes, you know, we created the transportation benefit district. What was it, a year and a half ago or something like that for the? For the to replace the utility tax. And if I remember correctly, and maybe Kyle, he might be listening, he can jump in here too. We're getting about fifty to a hundred thousand more than than we were originally getting with the utility tax. Is that right, Kyle? Or is it right on par with what we were getting with that?
It's it's just a little bit opposite. So the trajectory of the utility tax was was pretty was pretty strong. And so I I think, you know, if we were collecting now the utility tax, it'd be about one point one. We're getting about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand from the TBD. So they're really still pretty.
Got it. Thank you.
Again, the the one other thing that I'd want to say to that, though, is that we'd really want to look at that carefully. Because the additional cost for the sidewalks, we might want to expand what we're charging for the transportation. Benefit district or something like that, just because because I think it's going to be a knot inconsequential. And we do have a lot of road maintenance ahead of ourselves.
I also would set aside the fully city sponsored version of trying to affect repairs. For the magnitude of the objective and the fact that it's been clear all along that the property owner is really responsible for it. I do support partnership. And some of the schemes that would involve sharing of a burden of cost, the mechanics of that program, I'd like to try and work out. I do think that those programs would have to lead with obtaining quotes and expense. It really is in our interest to obtain response or observation points of what these expenses are. And not wait for the homeowner to try and discover that. So in suggestion, it would have to begin with the city initializing to collect up what the expense of these specific locations and actions will be.
I think we had Councilmember Ball and then Councilmember Henny and then Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, the problem I see with the Richland one is that. Property owner has to. Pay for it upfront and they just might say they're not going to do it, even if they are going to get a rebate. I mean, you can't force somebody to to do the work. I I am in favor more of of partnership. I like the Cedro Woolley model option one. I think that and that's on page twenty eight. So I mean, that's just how I feel right now, either that or a TBD.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This really is going to be a very difficult subject as we move forward. The simple reason anytime we get involved with the citizens is going to affect their pocketbook, they come through that door in droves. I can give you, first of all, I have a question then a comment. Do we carry insurance to cover in the event of somebody trips or do we self-insure?
WCIA is our insurer. Kyle's on.
Yes, so yeah, we're insured.
Very good. I'm pleased to hear that. The comment would be is I can give you some hard figures, today's numbers. I live over here in in Garden Ridge and we have eighty one homes there. The trees that were planted there were about twenty two to twenty five years old. They're all dying. So as of last week, we just replaced forty four of them. And I own two and a half of those trees. It costs right at a thousand dollars a piece to have it removed, stubbed ground by the tree and have it planted again. And that was a discount with forty four, so we got a pretty good price with that. So I can see that's going to be an ongoing challenge with the citizens to say, okay, your responsibility is this tree, but also now you're going to share in the expense of the concrete. And because we're asking citizens how to come forward with money, like Councilman Ball says, a lot of people are going to say, no. We experience that right now in Garden Ridge. We have individuals that have dug their heels in the ground, say, the tree is going to die and that's the way it is. We'll have to deal with that as time goes on on it. But also keep in mind for the citizen city, we have a lot of HOA properties here. And the HOAs have common area that support a lot of trees and things of that sort there. So the benefit for the city is anywhere where there is trees that next to these sidewalks that is common area for HOA. They have funding to pay for those trees and also maybe also to get involved with concrete. So keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Spencer, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, just going back to. The the fact that the homeowner, I I'm talking specifically homeowners, I mean, businesses are going to be in a little bit different scenario, but the the homeowners. They have mandates from both the HOA and the city to have these trees put in and whether that was put in before they moved in or they bought the home new and. And knew that they were going to be responsible from that for for that from the beginning. I think a non-starter for me is the way we have it currently where the the property owner is is responsible for for the sidewalks. So yeah, I would definitely lean towards either a partnership or a city-led. And and for those same reasons that Lisa mentioned, the the fact that the city can go in and 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 plan properly to say. We're going to do these particular sidewalks, which are the worst currently and and come up with a a master plan rather than. Hey, everybody's got to fix their sidewalks and and you know, get your thing repaired, come in for a twenty five percent. You know, rebate. I I think that looks like a disaster to me. I think if the city is is going to support, you know, trees and sidewalks and things like that and mandate that those are there. That the city and and at the end of the day, the city is us as citizens of the city of Liberty Lake. It were those aren't two different entities. The the citizens are paying taxes for this purpose. So. And I think this is a public safety issue. So I think the city really needs to take the lead on this and that we need to figure out a. A good plan to tackle it rather than, hey, we're going to, we're going to try and force homeowners to to pay for this and we're going to have, you know. Sue going out there and leaving notices, she's doing a great job, but. But that's, you know, that's going to be a disaster, I think. So so yeah, I would lean towards a city city-led or some sort of partnership.
All right, we haven't heard from you in a little bit. You good?
I'll say something.
And then we'll go to Mayor Proton.
So I don't know that this is the best idea and as a property owner, I hate it. But it must work in another city that we have a different house in. They have a tree tax that we have to pay every year. We get a separate bill. And it goes to trees and probably sidewalks and something else. So as you guys are looking at things to do. I don't know if it's the best idea, but it is another one that other cities use.
And that is, just for the record, that is how we approach stormwater. So that's really the utility district concept. But great point.
I'm here, Proton.
You know, on the one hand, we're we're saying that we're going to require all these trees. And then if we were to take that to the next step with with Councilmember Kurtz's suggestion about. The possibility of a tree tax, I mean, I don't, I don't think we should require. Everyone have a certain number of trees on their property and then on on the flip side. Say where that we're going to potentially charge them a tree tax because of that. That's one thing that concerns me, you know, I looked at those different options that I can't remember which slide it was, I think it was like option. Slide eight or nine that had all the different funding mechanisms. And as I look at that, I'm thinking to myself, we just heard, thank. Maybe it's the next one. That one, yeah. We just heard from from the mayor tonight that the proposed budget is going to have an eight point one. Million dollar ending fund balance. I mean, it seems to me that if we're going to start to tackle this problem, we could take a small percentage of that. And put it aside each and every year. We're not going to be able to solve this seven thousand sections all at once. So if we were to say, okay, for the, maybe it's going to be our seven year street. Or excuse me, seven year sidewalk plan where every year we're going to try to do a thousand of them. And try to bite off a little bit of that every single year because if we're going to, we're going to drown if we try to do everything at once.
I would agree and I have to say that even with a seven year plan. To remediate all the sidewalks that are bad now at the end of seven years.
There'll be more.
There'll be more. So we're trying to, we're trying to come up with a more strategic approach for the long term. And hopefully that'll, we can reflect that in our twenty year capital facility plan. So.
All right, who was first? Mike, go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand totally the responsibility of that sidewalk is the homeowners. And that's very clear. But I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that I feel that the city needs to belly up to the bar and take care of this issue. For the simple reason is that the sidewalks is a public safety situation. If we suddenly get down into a kicking contest to try to deal with every citizen who has a sidewalk in front of their house and they're responsible for replacing that. It's going to take a lot of staff time, maybe attorneys, what have you, the possibility of individuals tripping on that. While we're trying to get the citizen to do something about it. And therefore I think the city suddenly gets involved in the liability. And I think that would cause us more in the long run. So I would certainly look at and support, the city looks at this and says, all right. What is it going to take for the city to assume that responsibility? It's going to be a lot of money. There's no question about that. But because it's a public safety, that tree is not a public safety, in my opinion. That can be dealt with with a private citizen. The other thing I want to find interesting is that it's it's always amazing to me how elected officials. We talk about doing something within the city, how we're going to pay for it. Such as a new library and we can't talk about a tax. Well, no, let's don't talk about that. Let's don't talk about that. But yet what are we proposing for the discussion tonight? A tax levy, a sales and use tax, and that rolls off our lips like it's nothing. Dual standards amazes me.
I wouldn't wouldn't exactly say that they're just sources. Nobody said anything one way or the other about supporting. And I would say that most of us here wouldn't support any of those. Except grants, which we know we probably won't be eligible for, but unfortunately, those are the options. Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you. Yeah, and and I think. Based on the the last couple of comments, I think the, at least the consensus I'm seeing is we should first look at general fund allocation. We should look at what funds do we have? And yes, we've got lots of projects coming up. So then that 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 means we have to. Look at everything we have going on and just determine what's the highest priority. In my opinion, this is a public safety issue, so this needs to be moved. Above other projects that perhaps are not. That high a priority. And at the end of the day, this, you know, as we've talked about. You know, if you've got a ship that's sinking and somebody's bailing the water out, if you don't fix the actual problem, the hole in the. In the in the boat, and that is, we've got to figure out. How to stop planting trees that are not meant for those areas. I mean, we're talking about trees, but also these tiny little. Spots where these trees are planted, there's sprinkler systems that are getting destroyed as well. And that's all on the homeowner also. So, you know. We've got to nip it in the bud and and if the city is going to require a tree, go there. It's got to be something appropriate so that you don't just run into the same problem, you know, a few years down the road, once that tree matures. So.
Right, Councilmember Ball, and hopefully we can wrap this up.
Yes, just Cliff Notes version. How would a utility district work for this? I mean.
It would be similar to, it would be similar to what we did with stormwater. So stormwater is based on impervious surface, so it wouldn't be that, but it might be the 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 the. The tax for the utility district might be based upon street frontage. Right? Because both the sidewalk and the number of trees are related to that.
It's not a utility. I guess I don't.
It's it it's it's a mechanism, state law allows you to do that and it's, they call it a utility. It's not really a utility, but it's. The mechanism is.
Well, so is it a tax?
It'd be a fee fee based on, would you say linear, how many linear fees you have.
They're all taxes. At the end of the day, it's all taxes and.
Councilmember Kurtz.
One quick comment. So I mean, I think that's the thing, it's it's money and it's got to come from somewhere to pay for it if we're going to be into it. And I just want to be clear, so it's not misconstrued that I'm advocating to tax trees that people have. I actually don't have a tree at that house and I pay a tree tax. Like, I mean, it's it's another way to generate money to pay for something for the city. So I think that that's what some of these ideas are. I think we've got to figure out what the right fit and what what our impetus is to be able to pay for these things if they are a priority.
And I do want to say also that if we pushed on the HOAs. That's just a different tax.
Yeah, I know.
Just goes to a different pot.
Just one more real quick comment, and I I don't disagree with that. I just think that. You know, there's, there's two levers here. There's the lever of trying to come up with more funding. I.e. trying to tax people more or trying to look and prioritize, as Councilmember Spencer said, and say, okay, what is our highest priority here? Is our highest priority the public safety issue or is it something else in the city? And so. That's why I'm saying it might be better for us to do this slowly rather than trying to bite all of this off at once. Because if we try to buy it all of it off in once, we're going to end up with a five, six, seven, maybe eight million dollar bill, if not higher than that.
Agreed. And and again, at the end of this process, whatever comes out of the the study. My my hope would be that we come up with an approach that can be replicated in future years as well. And so I I do agree, it has to be systematic, but we have to look beyond what is today in terms of what's going to be in the future.
Okay, just one more quick comment.
Did you write the white paper? It was good. You did a good job. Yeah, I found it captivating.
So if I can make an editorial comment, and I don't mean to be Debbie Downer here, but. If if. Through the course of this discussion, a partnership or the city taking ownership and responsibility. For sidewalks, that cannot be done without new revenue sources, period. So I'm trying to set the expectation for you so that you know what the implication is moving forward as we continue this discussion. We need to get the input from the community, which is why we're doing the engagement effort. But those two methodologies will require new revenue. I don't know what that is. But it will require new revenue.
All right, on that note. Thanks to you guys for all your hard work and we are now up to filling a council vacancy. So would it help if I do a quick recap on what we've done in the past or would you like to or well?
E- either way, I was just going to kind of set the framework by going down the rules of procedure.
Go ahead, Mark.
So, and I don't have any of the historical context, so it would be helpful to to hear from. Anyone who has experience with what was done in the past, but essentially. We have been notified of a vacancy and that vacancy has now occurred. It's materialized. And so. What the current rules of procedure require is essentially the council to manage the process. So you you are going to set. An application, you're going to make a decision on a timeline and then you're going to manage the process. And so those are very broad terms. I think the deliberation is how to set those parameters tonight. But in terms of what has been done in the past, it would be very helpful, I think, to hear some of that information. So.
Yeah, and nothing's set in stone, like Mark says, it's up to you guys to set the process. But typically in the past, we've. We have advertised the the position, whether it's just on social media, well, and of course, at one point, you know, the splash was weekly, but. You know, at least get the advertisement out there for a couple of weeks, get the application back, depending on how many there are. You know, it's going to take Rochelle some time to go through and, you know, vet each of the candidates, make sure they're they're eligible. They've been a resident for a year. In Liberty Lake, they're an eligible voter, all all those things. And sometimes it takes time depending on how many. And then usually after that, we have a usually have a special meeting where we do the interviews. There's questions come up with by the council. We do the interviews and then if time permits, that night, the council deliberates, that goes into executive session, comes out, makes their. Makes their nominations and we go from there. We have had as many as three or four applicants. We've had as many as. I think fourteen, fifteen, fourteen or fifteen at one point. And at that point, I remember very well, we we weren't able to. We didn't have enough time to make a decision that night because we had other council business going on and. Half the candidates left because they didn't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting. And for me, that made my decision. And for me, that made my decision really easy, 'cause a lot of them left. But it, it's up to you. My, I, I have two, two questions that I, I'd like you to ponder. A, we do have a deadline, I think we, we've asked the splash to kind of hold a placeholder in the next publication that comes out November first, um, to, to advertise whatever the deadline you guys wanna set, it, set is. Um, so we are looking for at least a, a deadline date from you guys tonight, as to when the applications would be due, um, and then, you know, dates, you know, where, special meeting for interviews, you wanna, and whatnot. Um, the other thing that kind of just crossed my mind that I jotted down, you know, we've got a lot of special meetings. I hate to have an, have an open spot for too long. But that being said, we also have a lot of change coming. I don't know if you guys wanna consider putting off the interviews until January, when the new council is seated. So that's an option, that's all up to you, there's just things I wanna throw out there for you to, to consider. So, that's my background and thoughts, and we'll open it up, and Mayor Protem, you can go first.
Uh, thank you. So, um, we're kind of in a, a sticky situation here, um, because of the, the way this is all playing out in terms of the calendar. And I think on the one hand, uh, and I mentioned this at the, at the last meeting, and I probably should've just been quiet until I thought about it more. But on the one hand, we are in a situation where we're heading into the, into the budget. And we don't wanna be in a situation, or at least at that point, I thought we didn't wanna be in a situation where something could end on a three-three tie. Um, on the flip side of that, um, I also don't want to rush this so much that the very first vote that a new member has to take is on a budget that they have had nothing to do with or have been involved with. I think that's not only fair to this, unfair to the, to the city, I think it's unfair to the person who's involved, uh, in that process. I would, uh, in, be in favor of, of what you laid out, Mayor, and, and that is perhaps we open up, for applications, maybe it's November first or something, uh, and maybe application deadline stays open three or four weeks, and we give as many people as want, uh, an opportunity to, to apply. And then Rochelle has, you know, a good portion of December to kind of look through, and then the new council comes in on the first and does the interview process. We could do it that way. We could also try to set it up to where we maybe do it once the budget is done. And the budget's done, that's out of the way, we've got a budget, and then maybe the last meeting of the year is when we try to come in and select the new council member. Uh, I just don't want us to be in a, a position where we're putting a lot of pressure on a person to come in and read a hundreds-page-long budget that they haven't even had the chance to look through. Um, I think that's, that's very unfair for, for both the citizens and, and the person who's applied.
Yeah, I, before we go, I will also add, remember, you know, November and December have a lot of holidays. People have travel, people have things going on, it may be very difficult if we have applicants who are very interested and maybe very qualified, if they can't make that interview meeting, that's tough. So, that's my, uh, uh, Councilmember Kennedy.
I believe the most important thing we have in front of us is the budget, to be able to get that accomplished without, that, that is the absolute priority to have time to be able to discuss it. In years past, I've thought a lot about this, have been involved with the city for many, many years. I don't ever recall a time where even with six individuals, that we didn't come up with enough votes to pass the budget. I, I, I just don't recall we've ever had a stipend. I don't see that the, there was such a huge rush to get the seventh member just to possibly not have a split vote. I just don't see that. I look at all six individuals who are here that have the knowledge and hopefully the experience to be able to look at a budget and be able to make a decision and get a majority vote, that we can move forward.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So we have until, we have ninety days until Spokane County appoints somebody. So what is the date that we need to operate off of so that we don't get told?
That would be into January, 'cause it was what, the seventh?
What, what, what did you actually get from her? I know she said it during.
October seventh.
So that would give us till January seventh, right? Approximately, assuming that there's ninety. So it would have to be the first meeting in January, where we do the interview.
Last, last opportunity.
Thanks for remembering that, Councilmember Kurtz.
What, Sean, what did, date did you say, January seventh?
Well, because there's thirty-one days in December, so it's probably gonna be, if you do the math, it'll probably be like January sixth.
Yeah, I'm a handy dandy date calculator here.
And then October two.
Yeah, October two as well, so it's probably like January fifth or sixth.
And what's the first meeting date in January?
The sixth.
Sixth.
Okay, keep, I think we had Councilmember Spencer, and I'll look up the date calculator.
Yeah, I, I'll just echo what everybody has said already. I don't, I don't know that it's critical that we have to have somebody in place, uh, to, to pass the budget. I, I don't, as long as I've been here, we haven't had anything that came close to a, a split vote. So, um, so I don't think that's so much of a concern. And also, um, I think we do wanna give ourselves some time to, to make a good decision on this. Um, the individual who is appointed would be in that seat until, uh, twenty twenty-seven, when that election is certified, is that right?
Correct. Correct.
Doesn't seem right, Sean. I don't know what. There would be no election next year, so they would, they would be in that, in the next year. Yeah, so the next general. So, um, I think we could reasonably, uh, the other thing that I will say is, as long as I've been on here, we, I believe we've always been finished with the budget by the first meeting in, in December, if I, if I recall. But.
Not always.
Even if that, even if that's not the case, um, even if that's the case, well, at least as long as I've been here. I, I can't speak for, uh, beyond that. But, um, even if that's the case, you know, if we had, had to have a special meeting on the ninth to finish the budget, or vice versa, we could reasonably, uh, do, do the interviews on the ninth, uh, without having to go on the, uh, you know, the last week in December.
Yeah, unfortunately, so if I use, if we actually use ten-eight as the first day, that's effective. Plus, um, I've got my handy dandy calculator here that I use for work all the time. That actually takes us to the sixth, is the very last day we can do it.
In January.
In January, yes.
Yeah.
So he was talking to end of December.
Yeah, right. But just, just so, so we've got that in mind, so, I mean, so it's up to you guys, I mean, we can, we can, and again, keep in mind vacations and whatnot. That's my concern about, you know, qualified application, applicants not being able to make an interview. Um, but maybe what we can do right now, if you guys wanna decide on a, an end date, we can publish it as soon as possi-, you know, as soon as possible, open up the applications now. And then what date do you guys want them to be due back?
Can I make a suggestion? So perhaps we open up like applications now and ask for the final day to be Friday, the twenty-first of November. That would give Rochelle and city staff a couple of weeks at least, obviously Thanksgiving is in there, uh, to look through them, and perhaps we try to shoot for doing the interviews on the sixteenth of December.
It's middle of the month, so maybe not as affected.
Right, and then that way, we're not running into a situation where, you know, the clock may run out
Yeah.
by that first meeting in January. And if we, if for some reason the budget, you know, turns upside down, then we can schedule a, a special meeting some other time.
So here's my question, you know, I, I, that, that, looking at the calendar, that looks more reasonable. Um, with you, you, those of you with kids still in school, I know the calendar is different this year, what is Christmas break? Do you guys know off the top of your head?
It's like the twenty-second.
Yeah, I think.
Through what, though?
January fifth.
Yeah.
See, so you may, we may still miss people, the sixteenth might be more safe for getting, having people available.
I suggest the ninth. The ninth of December as a review slash appointment date.
It'd be an off night.
December ninth.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Okay. No way to zoom in? But let's, yeah, let, let's at least decide on the application date. Let's shoot, let's keep in mind the ninth or the sixteenth as the kind of open dates, Councilmember Kennedy.
I would throw out for consideration is to, don't start the application date till after the election on the fourth. With a couple of different reasons, it's, uh, on the fourth, we're gonna know who's coming in on January. And I think that would still, could change the players. Uh, I think there's certain individuals would not put an application until after that timeframe anyway. Uh, I am in favor to try to get this decision in December to be able to be done. I would not so much be in favor of trying to do it after the first year, the simple reason, we could have three individuals making a decision with absolutely zero experience. Zero. With that. Whereas now we have council of six and the mayor who do have experience. Just throw that out.
Councilmember Kurtz. Um, I think that if, to Councilmember Kennedy's point, if, um, the election isn't certified until what, the twenty-first?
Usually on the twenty-first or so.
End of the month, yeah. And hopefully things aren't so close that it'd be, um, nobody would know. But I think if, if somebody had applied and they actually got elected and they applied, they could just withdraw their application too, from the process if, if that happened. So I think having the applications due in November, um, I liked, uh, Mayor Protem's idea of the twenty-first. Um, I like Councilmember Dunn's idea of the ninth, um, or somewhere around there, um, depending on when Mayor Protem is available for the interviews.
We can always pick a different date, are you out that whole week?
Other than Monday, I could do Monday.
Okay. Okay, um, so, and didn't hear any other reflections on holding opening, like I think to Councilmember Kurtz's point, you know, if somebody applies and they change their mind, they can always withdraw, we get that all the time. So is everybody okay with the plan to open them up now, have them do on the twenty-first and shoot for? Again, we can finalize the date, but shoot from mid-December, let's just say that for interviews. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay, and then in between now and then, you guys can work on the process, right, the questions and whatnot. Okay, that's, sound good? Do we need a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, or i- if the splash isn't gonna come out till the first of November.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's like next week.
So you'd have it in.
You'd have, it'd be open for three weeks. I mean, it'd open now, if people see it on social media, and then, but we wanna make sure it gets published in the splash.
Okay, all right, got it.
And we don't need a motion?
No, if you guys are in agreement, it's okay.
All right, good. All right, general business, thanks for your quick work on that, you guys.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business items ten, A, B, and D.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kurtz, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items A, B, and D, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes six-zero, general business.
I'll make a motion to approve general business item eleven A, the hub parking lot and pathway dedication agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn, any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ball.
Is it already completed, that work at the hub?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's beautiful.
Okay, any other questions? Phil, Phil's here to cheer us on. Not hearing any other questions, those in favor of approving the hub parking lot and pathway dedication agreement, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, not hearing, motion passes six-zero.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business item eleven B, the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-eight Liberty Lake Police Department collective bargaining agreements.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. So I, I promised the guild that I would call on them first to do a quick presentation. Um, there may not be any questions or discussion, but I wanted to give, give Officer Jensen put Fritz an opportunity to showcase their hard work. And again, I'm gonna thank you guys for the, the great partnership during the process.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Mayor Comiscus, uh, city council members and other city staff. Uh, I spoke in front of this meeting just two weeks ago, but I'll reintroduce myself, my name's Kelly Jensen. I'm the, uh, Liberty Lake Police Guild President, and I'm also a police officer in the city, as I'm dressed tonight. Uh, I come this evening with sincere gratitude on behalf of our guild executive board, which is myself, Officer Kyle Fritz, and Corporal Justin Holm, who couldn't make it tonight, uh, and our entire team of officers, corporals, detectives, and sergeants who we represent. Uh, we wanna thank the city bargaining team of Heidi Workman, Kyle Dixon, and Mark McAvoy for engaging in what has been a respectful, thoughtful, and productive labor bargaining process. Though not directly involved in the negotiations, I also need to recognize Chief Simmons and Deputy Chief Morgan for their valuable input leading up to and throughout the negotiations. This was my first attempt at entering into any kind of labor bargaining process, and I couldn't have asked for a better first experience. Uh, we also want to thank all of you, the city council, uh, for your ongoing vocal support of this group of law enforcement professionals. Many of us, myself included, have come here after working in other parts of the country. We're not a single member of an administrative council such as this has anything positive to say about the law enforcement officers or who, who serve their community. To have this supportive words and actions of every single one of you is almost beyond our comprehension, so when I say thank you, it is absolutely genuine. We all know that negotiations are never easy, they require time, patience, compromise, and a genuine commitment to shared goals. In this round of bargaining, the city representative's willingness to listen, to understand our concerns, and to work toward practical, fair solutions, did not go unnoticed. I have spoken overwhelmingly positively to any who ask how the process went. The effort, the efforts of the city's bargaining team showed a deep respect for the work our members do every day to keep this city safe. Through collaboration, we've not only reached an agreement that supports our members and their families, but also strengthens the service we provide to the people of this city, that's something that all of us can be proud of. So thank you, all of you, for your leadership, your partnership, and most of all, your respect for the people who are here doing this work, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We look forward to continuing this spirit of cooperation in the future, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so, are there any questions or discussion, Councilmember Ball?
Well, yeah, I have a couple of things I wanted to ask you guys about. Um, so, on this work, hours of work, how some are three on, four off, it, you know, how you, how, how, so you're, so the guys are only on three days, I mean, they don't get a forty-hour work, or at least? I, I don't understand how you do this.
The, the, the way our schedule works right now is that we're four on, three off, three on, four off, for some variation of that. Uh, so over a two-week period, we have, we, we average more than forty hours a week. Because one of our weeks is forty-eight, and one of our weeks is thirty-six. So we end up working actually more than eighty hours in what would be a traditional two-week work period. Um, that's kind of how we get our full-time work in. Um, we're, 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 we're given the privilege of having a fourth day off, uh, because of the long hours we work, we come in, we work twelve-hour shifts.
Right.
Um, and many of us work graveyard shift, like Officer Fritz. Um, and so that, that fourth day off, that we currently work, that is potentially, the potential to change in the new year at some point. Um, but that's how it works right now.
Well, but still, i- i- it's thirty, it's thirty, um, okay, twelve hour, thirty-six hours for the one group. I, I don't know, I just, that doesn't make sense to me. That's seventy-two hours in a two-hour work week, as opposed to.
So if you mapped it out over an entire calendar year, um, as Officer Jensen was saying, in a, in a pay period, you would be working one week at thirty-six hours, one week at forty-eight hours, one week at thirty-six hours, one week at forty-eight.
Okay, I didn't realize you alternated, I thought, you know, like this group does the three-day and this group, okay, all right, all right.
Just for example, today is my Friday of my short week. So I've worked thirty-six hours this week, I get the next four days off, and I'll be back on Sunday for my four-day week, and all four days next week.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure it was fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is what they like.
Yeah, okay, and then, uh, false, false arrest insurance, uh, wow, how does that work?
That, that's not a question I can answer. Um, I apologize, I don't, i- it's something that I can certainly find out and answer for you. If there's anybody else in the room that can answer that for me, I'd certainly rely on them. But I can certainly find out an answer for you.
Yeah, I was just curious, and then, um, extra-duty employment. Um, so is that like, if, if during your four days off, like you wanna go and, I don't know, um, do retail or something, is that what it's saying, it's okay to do that?
The, the, the language that we've put in our contracts for the extra duty is, has to be, um, law enforcement-related work. Uh, has to be not necessarily in uniform, but it has to be in our role as a police officer. Uh, and that's, that's something that we're not engaging in right now, it's something that we hope to get into. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, interest in our membership to get into that, so that people can kind of broaden their horizons, horizons a little bit, um, broaden their networking, get out into areas outside of just Liberty Lake, and get involved with other agencies in the area. Uh, for example, one of the big employers that employs law enforcement in this county is Walmart. They hire, uh, uniformed police officers with their cars to park in front of the store and be of law enforcement presence in the stores during their business hours.
Yeah.
Um, and then whenever any, their, their law, um, law prevention engages people who are stealing, then they kind of rely on the, the law enforcement who are there to help out and to, to take over at some point.
But that doesn't mean like on one of your days off, like if you wanted to work for DoorDash or something, you could still do.
That's, that's separate, that's a separate agreement that a, a, a member would have to apply for with the chief of police, and would have to get approval through the chief of police to be able to do something like that.
Not that you would do that, but I just wanted to make sure you had the freedom, you know, to do whatever you want to do.
So if I can clarify that, that, that specific provision is not written into this agreement, it is uh, part of our personnel manual, so all employees have an opportunity to request outside employment. And that, uh, decision is made, uh, by a conversation between the employee and his or her supervisor.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Protem.
Just real quick, I, I'll, I'll mainly, obviously be voting in, in favor of this, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I just wanna repeat what I said at the last meeting, I hope the next time this comes around that. I hope the next time this comes around, that you guys will open it up to the public so that they can come in and listen to the process. Because I think if they did, they would be even more appreciative of what you guys do. So, thank you.
Thanks for the input.
Councilmember Kurt, uh, Kennedy, caves.
I'm also very pleased to be able to vote yes on this, but just as a observation, last time I saw you were in suits to give a presentation. Today you show up in uniform. I'm sure that had no effect on how we would vote. But you show up, and, and there's a taser being in the back of the room.
You did look very spiffy.
Alright, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, it's kind of hard to vote no, you know, there's some guys carrying guns and things, but. Of course, you know, that's a joke. Uh, we, we love our law enforcement here. We love the, uh, safety that we enjoy in, in this city. Um, I would like to echo what Councilmember, or Mayor Potem Cargill said. I, I think this process, given the feedback that we've heard from city staff and from you guys, I think there's really nothing to lose by, by, uh, conducting those negotiations in public. And, uh, like he said at the last meeting, you're probably not going to have anybody show up to the meeting, but at least it's available for, for folks to see. And again, to appreciate what you guys are working on and what you guys are trying to accomplish to remain, uh, competitive with the other municipalities. Um, but, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, uh, no more comments or questions. We'll take it to the vote. All those in favor of approving the twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight Liberty Lake Police Department Collective Bargaining Agreement, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion passes six zero.
Mayor Potem, before we move on, uh, the, the plan was, and, and because this is a three-year agreement, uh, we would like to get a photo with the guild members to commemorate just the past. This is a big deal, right? These are, these labor negotiations are never easy, like Kelly mentioned. Uh, but we've reached, uh, an amicable solution that will cover us. It's financially sustainable over the next three years. It meets all of the objectives. It gives the chief maximum flexibility, uh, to meet the operational needs of the department. So we'd like to commemorate that with a photo with the, with the entire council. So guild members, DC, come up.
It's still the most exciting ride along I've ever given.
We've been best friends ever since. Yeah. He is great.
Alright, we're all back, okay, um.
Mayor, make the motion to approve general business item eleven C, the facility master plan.
Second. Second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion or questions? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor of approving the facility master plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes six zero.
Make a motion to approve item eleven D, the tirama donation for our home for the holidays.
Second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any questions?
I just want to recognize the members of our community who contribute to bringing that forward.
Yeah, very, very excited. Yeah, this is great. I think, I think the donations have been going well for the events. Um, so those in favor of approving the tirama donation form for our home for the holidays, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes six zero.
And, um, make a motion to approve item eleven E, the Idaho Central Credit Union donation form for our home for the holidays.
Second by Councilmember Kurtz. Another acknowledgement of our vote businesses, and ICC has been very involved in the community. It's good, great to see that. Uh, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero.
So we are now back to item ten C, which is the purchase of winter displays for home for the holidays.
Yep.
Um, I will make a motion to, uh, to approve that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. If we have questions, Jen is on.
I just had a real quick question for, um, Mark, actually. Mark, what was the amount that, um, Winter Glow wanted us to pay for those displays?
Uh, for just the displays, it was twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so, um, so would we have been, I guess my question is, would we have received more displays for the twenty-five thousand than we're receiving under the fifteen thousand here? Obviously, I would assume we were going to receive some more, right?
So, what, what you're seeing here, the purchase order that you see in front of you here, and, and Jen, fill in any gaps here that I may be misstating. These are, uh, there may be some displays with this, but, but these are primarily lights. Um, the, the difference would be, uh, over time, the Winter Glow, uh, organization had formed, uh, you know, uh, displays that had, uh, shapes and, you know, different things. And so there was, there was that kind of inventory that we were talking about. Um, this is primarily, uh, light, uh, purchases. So it, the light, the thing to, uh, connect it to a fence or a shrub or a building, or all of that kind of infrastructure to, uh, execute the program that Mikel, uh, mentioned a couple of meetings ago. Jen, what am I missing on this, if anything?
So, the difference is, eh, eh, what you're saying is correct, um, but these displays are brand-new, and these displays are, uh, definitely a higher grade of display than what we were seeing with the Winter Glow displays. So, um, the quality is, is much more significant. The warranty is a five-year warranty. Um, we didn't have any of that with Winter Glow, and, and some of the displays with Winter Glow were in what we decided were in dire need of help. Um, so this is, this is a fresh start for us. Um, it's, it's a good start. It gives us a five-year warranty to, um, bank on these displays, to count on this company, um, and get us started with the right foot.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dick, Councilmember Dunn?
Just want to thank again the staff for literally putting this together from nothing. Uh, this has been an adventure and a very quick one at that. Thanks, Jen.
Uh, Councilmember.
This has been all, this has been all Mikel. So the thanks goes to Mikel.
Uh, Councilmember Ball, did you have a question?
Well, uh, Jen, it does say in here, you're buying an elf girl with a candy cane, and, and, you know, so there is some stuff in here, a Santa meal.
Yes, there are some displays in there as well as lights. It's kind of a mix of both. Um, we're, we're sort of building the beginnings of our own, um, display setup with the funding that we were allotted this year.
Um, and then also, um, how are you getting, because I've had people ask me, well, now that Winter Glow is gone, what are you guys doing? I mean, is it, I didn't see it on the website when I looked the first time. Is it there yet? Is what?
It should be, but we also have a, a new Parks and Rec Facebook page that's a sub-page off the city page. So all of the information is now on that. Um, I can double-check, uh, tomorrow to make sure it's getting shared to the, the regular city page.
Okay.
But yes, we are beginning to share it out. We've actually had, or, uh, Mikel let me know today that we had our first registration for the home, oh, Battle of the Branches, um, home decorating signup today, so that's great. Uh, people are interested, they're seeing it. It's, it's fantastic. So it's out there. We just, we're just in the very beginning stages of getting it advertised.
Okay, and then, um, this is probably a question more for Mark. Did the Winter Glow people get that stuff out of there? As you said, you wanted it out by the middle of October.
So we gave them originally, uh, a deadline of October the sixteenth, I believe. Uh, they have made, uh, material progress. I think there's still items that need to be moved, but they, they are, they are making progress toward that, so we're working with them to remove, or get the rest of the items removed.
So does that mean the big dumpster thing will go too?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That was, that was part of the agreement, yes.
Okay.
Is it?
Uh, it's gone?
Oh, good, great. Alright, if there's no other discussion questions, those in favor of purchasing the, uh, winter displays for home for the holidays, not exceed fifteen thousand, two hundred, three dollars and forty-nine cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes six zero.
Mayor, make a motion to approve, uh, ten E, the ball field rental agreement for the Riverview Little League.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Questions, discussion?
So my question on this, uh, mark is, um, first of all, I, I assume this kind of, um, smooths over the issue that we were having earlier this year with Riverview and the, the, them being caught off guard with the, the field costs and the lining costs and everything like that. And so this kind of provides a clean slate for us going forward.
So I'm gonna let, uh, the answer is yes, uh, but I'm gonna let Jen address kind of the process that, uh, we worked with the Little League, uh, to get to this point. Um, and she's much better equipped to describe that.
And I, I'm gonna actually defer this to Mikel because he is the expert on this. He worked really hard to come to this agreement. So, Mikel, if you would, would you elaborate on that?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, with that issue we had last year, uh, one of the concerns were these longer-term rentals. And so with Sean's help, we put together an agreement for long-term rentals. So someone that's renting fields for a season. So this may not just affect Little League, it could affect other organizations that want to rent grass space for season lengths of time, or other ball fields for a season length of time. And we're defining season as a three-month time period, and then we're charging a rate per their participants, rather than, uh, a set fee, and so that they can plan accordingly when they do their registrations. Say they want to rent s- so many fields, it's X amount of dollars per registrant, they can just tack that on to their registration fee. So it smoothes it out and makes it simpler for the organizations, and it still produces the revenue to help cover staff time and costs in, in maintenance, the extra maintenance that goes into when the fields are being used more frequently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one question.
So, um, with that being said, if it's per, per registrant, is, uh, is there a, a minimum that they have to hit? Because, you know, as, some other organization could come in and, you know, potentially rent out a particular field for the full season. But, you know, they, they anticipated they'd have a lot more participation, but perhaps they didn't? Is, is there some sort of provision in there for that?
Uh, so we don't have any set provision, but it's, it's on a, an agreement basis where we would sit down with the organization and then, um, follow up to see if they would fit, if then, this, it's for larger organizations that have more people and more, more requests. So no, we don't have a specific provision, but it's not open to everyone. It's a negotiation process. And then we have the set fees that will be coming to council as well for the added to those fees.
And I will add that, um, we met with Riverview Little League, uh, specifically, uh, with Mikel and staff, and they were absolutely thrilled with this new process. So I think this is, this is going to be a great way to implement, uh, longer-term rentals of our field facilities, um, going forward into the future.
Great work. Thanks to you both. Alright, those in favor of approving the new rental agreement with Riverview Little League, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes six zero. Alright, we are up to council comments, and I am watching the clock. Um, do we have any additional council comments before we do? Councilmember Kennedy.
I promise make this very brief. It has, in reference to, uh, helping code enforcement as we move forward. This is a time where elections are going. We have individuals who run for office, and, and quite often, they're not experienced where they can actually put signs or not. I read a caution, everybody's running for office. Then we're even going to put a sign, make sure that you've got the approval of that property owner, because if not, it's probably going to disappear. And also, one thing that seems to happen from time to time, that is most unfortunate, where individuals, not necessarily candidates, but there are people who are very zealous to help them out, will take their competitor's signs, put them in areas where code enforcement will get involved. And then they're able to say, your sign is there, it needs to be removed. That happened, I believe, yesterday and today. And I encourage individuals that don't do that, because code enforcement was involved today for a long period of time where they shouldn't have to be doing that. Let's just use, let's use common sense. We are looking for individuals who run for office and be responsible. And I'm sure that none of those individuals would ever have anything to do with this.
Now, and now it's Christmas tree lighting sign season, so code enforcement will be dealing with that. Alright, any, uh, council, further council comments? Alright, Councilmember Ball?
You mean, like, I'll put your sign, yeah, lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all, they're all.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, um, alright, uh, count, no further council comments. Public hearings and appeals. Lisa, we have our public hearing on proposed co-living housing code amendments. We have these.
I'm gonna go real quickly on this, because, uh, but, uh, can you pull up a presentation, please? Um, so I presented to you two council meetings ago, an overview of this. Next slide, please. Um, and so co-living housing is basically the concept of residential development with sleeping units that are independently rented and lockable and provide living and sleeping space and, um, uh, and while the residents share kitchen facilities and other sleeping units. Synonyms are congregate living facility, single-room, occupancy rooming house, boarding house, lodging, residential suites. Bottom line is that it is a, um, uh, it's not unlike what probably most of us lived in when we were in college. Next slide, please. Housing with roommates. Um, so I'm not going to go all through this. Let me just suffice it to say, the RCWs require us to pass this um, for any zone in which, uh, we're allowed to have, uh, we allow more than, uh, six units in, of multifamily, um, or townhomes or attached townhomes or whatever. Uh, must take effect no later than December thirty-first of this year. And there are specific requirements that related to parking and density calculations, et cetera, that have been included in this code. Uh, in my opinion, we really didn't need this because it's already something that is allowed. We don't, eh, we, we have, um, we allow for, uh, family homes, so the assisted living for, 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 with up to eight people all living in there. That's a, that's a, just a type of co-living housing. Next slide, please. Um, again, we have to add the definition to our code. Next slide, please. Um, and w- we're basically adding it to our, to our R-two and R-three zone, as well as our mixed-use zones. Um, and in the River District.
Thank you.
All the zones in the River District are technically mixed-use zones, so it's, eh, that would allow for that. So next slide, please. So again, we're also as a limited use, and the limited use standards, next slide, please, really just reflect exactly what the code, what the RCW say we have to include in there. Um, next slide, please. Um, we met all of the procedural requirements. Next slide, please. And, um, relevant comp plan goals are listed in, on page four of Planning Commission's findings, conclusions, and recommendation. Next slide, please. And they made the finding that we did, the Planning Commission made findings that we completed the receivable review. Um, public agency, public and agency notice requirements were met and accomplished, accomplished in a timely manner. Public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation. And the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify to a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and now city council. Next slide, please. And so they based the approval on criteria that is listed in our city development code, that it's, uh, and any one of these requirements are met, or condi- eh, these, uh, findings are, are met, then it can be approved, that it met a number of the criteria. Next slide, please. And basically, the Planning Commission recommended that the, um, that the amendment, that the proposed amendments be approved as presented, and it was a six-one vote. Um, so, next slide, please. So now, you're, we're at public testimony.
Alright, we'll open the public hearing at eight forty-nine Verizon time. Uh, and if there's anybody here in chambers who'd make, like to make a public comment on this public, um, hearing. public um hearing with regards to co-living, I'm gonna talk as long as I can to get us to the next minute. Um, if there's anybody online who'd like to make a public comment with regards to this public hearing specifically, please send a note to our meeting host in chat. We'll check and see if anybody's there. Nope. Okay, all right, well, it is eight fifty and we have no public comments. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at eight fifty.
I just want to remind city council that I need you to deliberate. Um, I give us a basis for for whatever decision you make.
Oh, like now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Were there any questions or discussion? Sorry, I was looking forward at the ordinance, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
So um obviously, we don't have much of a choice as to whether we do this or not. Um, so I mean, we have to vote in favor. The city has to, has to have this in place by the end of the year, but you know, just to for the sake of deliberation, I will just say, I think this is a not yet another example of Olympia making decisions for cities across the state that may not always fit in their cookie cutter approach. And we're caught up in it, just like every other city is caught up in it, when, as you mentioned, city or Lisa, we already do this. It's already basically part of our plan, and yet here here's Olympia coming and and mandating this down at the local level. It just drives me crazy, but thank you.
Agreed. Anybody else? Councilmember Spencer?
I'll I'll just uh to to echo that, you know, when we were talking about the number of potential uh individuals, parking vehicles in front of these these buildings, it's it's really asinine, to be honest, but it is what it is. Again, we're just, our hands are tied, so.
All right, anybody else? Councilmember Dan?
I support alternatives in housing and especially those that would potentially create relief in the expensive housing in our community. Thanks.
All right, anybody else? All right, deliberation's over. All right, um, before we move into resolutions, I will ask if somebody would like to make a motion to extend the meeting to like nine fifteen.
Motion. Go ahead, go ahead.
It's my favorite motion. You know that, right? To make a motion to extend the meeting to nine fifteen.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion of second to extend the meeting to nine fifteen. Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are extended to nine fifteen. All right, resolutions. Shell, your turn. Oh.
I'm just. Before she reads the resolution.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Oh, we know, okay. So that's where I'm I'm confused because the ordinance is coming up, so that's not where we're. Because I have to write out your findings. Oh, okay.
You you want it as a motion approving the the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Y- yes, and typically what happens is we bring the ordinance back, but but council typically votes on the um, the the amendment and typically we don't bring it back forward, but uh at the same time.
Okay, I thought voting on the amendment was the ordinance.
Right.
So we're not voting on the amendment through the ordinance that is under A, ordinance A?
We've, it's always in the past, you voted on it at the um, at the public hearing, and then we've brought the ordinance back. So I don't know, Sean, I'm, that's a question for you.
So the the ordinance would be the written document, but I are you looking for the council to approve what the Planning Commission's recommendation was?
Yes.
As far as the vote now?
I move that we accept the uh Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. All right, so just wasn't clear, sorry about that. All right, resolutions. Rochelle.
Resolution twenty five two eighty, approving a second amended and restated community revitalization financing and tax increment area agreement, authorizing the execution of such agreement and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
All right. Do a quick summary and then we'll take a.
So a quick summary, and then we did get um a a really small amendment uh from our partner jurisdiction. So uh, so with the TIF, we have uh we're co-sponsoring jurisdiction with uh Spokane Valley Fire District, uh Spokane County uh and Spokane County Library District. And so uh to to compli- to contemplate future years, there was an amendment um it that they asked us to include before we adopted tonight that Evan's pulling up right now. Um, that essentially gives the jurisdictions the ability to adjust their uh increment, their annual increment each year. And so we have set it to a million dollars. The city's gonna contribute five hundred thousand. Uh, Fire District's gonna contribute three hundred and fifty, County's gonna contribute one fifty and this uh and the um library district is gonna contribute some increment up above that. There's is usually in the range of eight thousand to ten thousand. So they're they're a little bit of a smaller partner, and so um, but with that, um so this this may be hard to read. I'm gonna read it out loud, but this is just an inclusion in exhibit C, which is on page two forty six of your packet. And uh the paragraph states, notice to the Spokane County Treasurer, so the sponsoring jurisdictions are noticing to the treasurer uh from either the library district, fire district, city or county regarding the allocation of its regular property tax revenues each year from the tax allocation base value to pay for public improvement costs of the public improvements to be constructed within the boundaries of increment area two zero zero five dash zero one. So this gives the jurisdictions, I guess, the ability to not be locked in to that annual payment. And so um there would be additional discussions that would happen if anybody changed that. Um, but at at the request of our sponsoring jur- jurisdictions, uh they're all adopting this uh this week as well, and Spokane County is the last to act, so they'll be adopting this on November seventeen. Um, but they they brought this forward for consideration, just to have the ability to move that amount year over year. And so they're they're asking us for consideration to include this um in the amended agreement.
Question. I know we don't have a motion, you have a questions. Go ahead.
Kyle, just, I'm trying to understand the inclusion. Is it asserting the ability to, I guess these were opt out?
That is my understanding, yes. And so uh to to come to, we, so the the three four jurisdictions have to come to a unanimous conclusion on the language. And uh this, I, this is our path forward to get to get to, I guess, a a joint agreement with Spokane County, the Fire District and Library District. And so I I would say the the issue is if we if we don't agree to this, then it throws the future of the TIF, I guess, into uncertainty.
So are we're being, our hands being forced to get?
Yeah, and we can true, we could say, no, we don't, we we do not agree to these terms, we're not gonna sign this. Um, and then uh and then likely the TIF would expire on December thirty first, and then we'd have a whole other discussion on our hands about what this looks like. So.
Okay, any other questions for?
December thirty first of this year?
Yes.
Yes.
And so this, and so what this resolution and this agreement does is it extends the TIF through twenty thirty four to match the expiration of the state sponsored lift that we touched on a handful of times. It maximizes um improvements geared towards economic development at a rate of two million dollars a year.
But we would, the 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 process going forward then would be to engage in these discussions with the partners on an annual basis.
Yeah, so what would happen is is nothing would happen unless somebody brought something up.
Okay.
And so, so the hope is that this paragraph is never brought up again, because obviously it's I, it is my belief that it is at the best interest of the city to continue this through twenty thirty four. Uh, we do need all of our partners, partnering jurisdictions to to come along with us, though. And so it's a, it's a kind of a tricky.
To be clear, your position is the partners will not, um, I guess I'd say, enter into this agreement unless this paragraph is included.
I, yes, I can't say that for sure, but they brought this to us, I I think with that intent. And so I uh, there could certainly be a decision tonight to say we do not agree to these terms. Um, and that I I do not know the downstream effect of that, and it could be, it could be pretty large.
Um, who was first? Councilmember Kurtz. What's the why?
I, so this is, I I I'm trying to parse this. Uh, so what we're doing in extending this to twenty thirty four is we're committing ourselves, we're committing the Fire District, and we're committing the county to a set amount of contribution every year. And so this essentially gives them, call it like a ripcord at some future year to say, uh, we don't wanna contribute our three hundred and fifty thousand, we wanna contribute two hundred thousand. Or we wanna contribute one hundred thousand. And then we would have to come back to the bargaining table to hopefully get them to okay, here's your full increment. Us as a city, do we wanna pick up that increment? Or risk kind of having the the entire program? Um, I guess sunset early, really, for lack of a better term.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and then Councilmember Ball.
I think um Annie just, you know, asked my question.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ball.
So we're locked in, though, to five hundred thousand?
Yes.
And that money comes from?
So that comes from the increase in the base amount. So so in back in two thousand and seven, we had a base year. And so we have grown that exponentially. And so we are taking a portion of that increase. Our full increment would be closer to six hundred thousand dollars. If if we did not get set amounts. And so since this lies essentially wholly within the city, the city's the greatest beneficiary of the economic development engine and the increased property tax. By the Fire District does have a benefit on the property tax side. County to a lesser extent on the property tax side, a little bit more on the sales and use tax side, but we get the full benefit of all. And so um, I I I think there was real consternation amongst the partner jurisdictions about even continuing this past twenty twenty five.
Yeah, continuing the program?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we had a meeting with the county and that's, that was the feeling I got at that first meeting.
So the ca- and and the county is looking for nickels in the couch cushion right now, and so we're we're trying to kind of get get to a logical equi- equitable solution to still maximize the benefit of the the lift that a state sponsor.
But any of them could bail at any time, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Spencer?
Um, so if for some reason one of them came back, y- you know, several years down the road and said, well, we're only gonna contribute this amount. If if we were to take that extra on, are we still capped at a million?
Yes.
For for the for the match?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, and so it would be, if that happens, it would be the the remaining jurisdictions, I guess. It would be a discussion amongst them on picking up, picking up that delta.
Or do we, like we used to years ago, and we didn't have the funds coming in? Do we take money out of the general fund and?
And we did that for, we did that for fifteen years, or um, so we we.
Still a benefit to the city.
Exactly.
One way or another. So at at the end of the day, we stand to benefit.
And we were contributing a lot more than five hundred thousand dollars in there. So to get to the full.
All right. Councilor Dunn and Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, I support the resolution on the basis of extending the TIF lift. Uh, this has been an incredible vehicle for our community and the greater region, in my opinion, and economic activity. So um I wish to do what is necessary to continue.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Kyle, uh, I think you already answered this, but I just wanna make sure. The others that are listed on there are all going to agree to it.
That is my understanding. Yeah, so normally I would not have given you this if, but not for the time constraint. We would have pushed this to a different meeting and had the discussion, so we would have had all the answers, but we got this today.
Okay.
All right, there's no.
I got something to say.
Okay, go ahead. Sean's got something to say.
So just just for for clarity in what you're seeing right here, so this is just notice that goes relative to what the treasurer is supposed to do relative to the taxes and collection. And so each year, the treasurer's gonna get this from the jurisdictions and the entities and say, okay, this is what the tax base is, is what the numbers is. So they know what to do as far as collections are concerned. So the additional language, so it's gonna be on an annual basis.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, an annual basis relative to what that is. So it won't be like in April, they decide we're not gonna do this anymore, right? It's gonna just go through that 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 calendar year, and then maybe the next year they won't wanna do it, but it will be on a yearly basis. So they'll give this notice to the treasurer, let's say in twenty twenty six, and then in twenty twenty seven, they decide they don't wanna do it. The language that's in red there will then reference the twenty twenty six agreement to say we don't want what we did in twenty twenty six. We either don't wanna do anything or we want a lesser amount. That's what that language means when you see it right here, okay? The bigger picture is probably budget flexibility for each of the entities and what they wanna do each year. But what that language means just gives them the ability to say, what we did last year, we don't wanna do the next year. That's what you're seeing here.
Go ahead.
So Sean, so you're saying they can't jump ship in the middle of the.
Right, it'll be an annual scenario on what they wanna do, and they may not do anything, right? It may be the same as they did before, but the new language gives them the flexibility to say, we don't wanna do what we did last year. Which, as it was written originally, was, you were in it for the remainder of the entire time.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no more questions. We don't have, we need a motion.
Uh, I move resolution twenty five dash two eighty.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, oh. Public comment? Do we have any public comment, either in person or online on this resolution specifically around the um, around resolution twenty five dash two eighty? Is there anyone online? Nope. All right, so we have no public comment. Now, council, those in favor of approving resolution twenty five dash two?
We need to have a motion to amend this agreement to include that language.
Okay, let's do that for first. So do we have a motion to?
Separate motion to amend this agreement to include the language that Kyle has referenced. We have to vote on that first, and then we'll go back to the original.
I'll make a motion to amend the agreement to include what Kyle put on the screens.
Red stuff.
In red.
In in exhibit.
An exhibit C.
All right, we have a second. Second by Councilmember Spencer. Any discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor of the proposed amendment to resolution two twenty five dash two eighty exhibit C, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. We have a motion for approving the amended. Okay, it's right on the table. Okay. Those in favor of approving the amended resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? I lost track of what we had motions for. All right, any opposed? And then uh motion passes six zero. Um, just in case, do we have a another motion to extend?
I'll make a motion to extend to nine twenty.
Okay. All those in, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, we're extended to nine, whopping nine twenty.
I could have said nine sixteen.
Oh, yeah, you could have. All right, ordinance, first read. Go ahead, Rochelle.
Ordinance three eleven, and ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending City of Liberty Lake Development Code and the River District Development Regulations Regarding Co-Living Housing.
All right, so as a first read, we don't have any actions with that. Next one, second read of ordinance two seventy two A.
Ordinance two seventy two A, and ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the Liberty of Lake Municipal Code Title Nine, Relating to Building Regulations, Amending General Requirements Applicable For All Adopted Codes, Repealing Ordinances in Conflict, Establishing Penalties for Non-Compliance, Establishing an Appeal Body and Providing for Severability and Effective Date.
Make a motion to approve ordinance two seventy two A.
I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. Any discussion, questions? Not hearing any. Do we have any public comment, either in chambers or online for ordinance two seventy two A? Please send a note to the meeting host if you do are online, wanna make a comment. Not seeing any? All right, we have no public comment. I will take it to council vote. Those in favor of approving ordinance two seventy two A, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Emergency ordinances, none. Introduction of upcoming agenda items. Thanks for the bigger print. Um, so we have lots and lots of proposed special meetings, obviously with the budget coming up, um capital facilities plan is coming up. Um, and some TBDs. Is there anything that anybody is looking to add? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I just had a a quick question. I I think originally we had planned the November twelfth, one on November eleventh. Um, but obviously that's Veterans Day, um, so I'm I'm assuming that's why it's moved to November twelfth. Is there any way we could do that on Monday instead of Wednesday?
Yeah, so that was just a placeholder, and so it's purely up to council's um determination on when to hold.
Okay.
Is anybody prepared to answer that now, or do we wanna send out a poll? Because we have a little bit of time, so proposing to do it on the tenth?
Oh, wait, oh.
Yeah.
For the budget.
For the budget, on the tenth instead of the twelfth.
Or just a different day from the twelfth.
Yeah. Okay.
You mean the eleventh, because that's.
No, yeah, we're not having it the eleventh. No, yeah, we're not having it the eleventh.
Oh.
Yeah, now it's on the twelfth.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll pencil, we'll pencil, then we'll find out, and then as we get closer, we'll figure out if we even need, need that date.
Yeah.
All right, um, and obviously, we'll have a follow-up later on, at some point, on the, um, on the sidewalk stuff, so, after the engagement. All right, anything else? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yes, oh, thank you, Mayor. In the past, we've had two special meetings where we talked about the governance manual, where we talked about specific things that are in there. What we haven't had is a council meeting or a meeting where we can, how individual council members can ask about anything else that they want to discuss in there. And I don't see it on the, that's got to be on the agenda, to some point, we're going to be voting on that. But I, I can't see we're going to be able to put it out for a vote if we haven't had adequate time to have council members ask additional questions.
Well, we will take a look at the advanced agenda and see if we can add a, you know, a workshop to a regular meeting.
So we did still have two other chapters that were on our list, four and twenty-one, I think, um, that we still needed to get to as well. And then anything else, uh, to Councilmember Kennedy's point? So I'm not sure if we want to try to figure out the best meeting for that.
Well, um, Mark, can we just put, put that on our discussion for the directors' meeting tomorrow? We'll kind of look at the, what's coming up.
Absolutely, yes. Perhaps if we added that to the same meeting where we're going to appoint somebody, and they give them a, a taste of whether they actually want to do this or not.
Come prepared, what are your questions? All right, that sounds good, um, citizen comments, any, any?
I had another.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, two quick things, I think.
Yeah.
Um, one, I had asked, um, about, we got, we all got a letter from the Spokane River Keepers. This was a while ago.
Oh.
Um, and my question, um, was about potentially adding it to an upcoming agenda. Um, potentially getting a presentation from the group, if that's something that people want to do. Um, but to also hear from city staff about what our current efforts are to support, support the river and any recommendations staff would have on this topic and how it might fit with any of our planning, climate resiliency, any of the things that were required to do.
I'll let Mark speak, because we, uh, we talked about this a little bit on Friday.
So, uh, we, staff can definitely talk through, uh, specifically the requests that were made, uh, in the letter, uh, but if, if you would like to hear from this group, um, that wouldn't be a bad thing either, but staff can definitely speak to the efforts that are underway or planned, uh, related to these four requests.
Okay, and I was thinking January, because we're busy, right, in my mind, um, but if.
We have no objection to January.
Okay. And then, so if we could do, put that in January sometime, that'd be great. And then the other question that I had, this popped into my head, is really looking at some of the schematics earlier today. There was the new city hall with the new dais and our logo from two thousand and one. And I wondered if it might be time, since the year, we're going to be twenty-five years old next year, to have a new logo with a new city hall. Um, so I'm wondering if we could talk about that at an upcoming.
I would love to, you know, I was, one of the things that I was hoping for, and it got.
I remember that.
Yeah.
But I think twenty-five years.
Yes, I think it's, yeah.
It's very good.
Yeah. All right, let's get it on there, Councilmember Kennedy.
I just want to go on the record, I completely support those two ideas, start them January one. I have no doubt with that.
Come give citizen comments, Mike.
Go for it.
All right, great, we've got those added, and I think, was that it? All right, um, citizen comments, there are one citizen, two citizens in the audience, any? Okay, well, we'll, we'll need to, Rochelle, you know who she is, we'll register.
A couple of things, um, one, excited to learn more about the home for the holidays, and we will be advertising for you for that as well. So, um, I'm going to connect with Mark. And two, if you are going to update a logo, I'd love to visit Spokane to put our name in the hat to do some in-kind design work.
I'd love that.
Take that on, so, that's a whole.
Awesome, thank you very much.
There you go.
Okay, no other citizen comments, nobody online? Going once, going twice, nobody, all right, we have no executive comp session, and with that, there's no further. This, we are adjourned at nine fourteen.